I am calling to order the regular session of the Millbrae City Council for February 9, 2021. Thank you all for putting up with us as we finished up our interviews for the planning commissioners. And with that, city clerk, could you please do roll call?
Pleasure. Councilmember Holliver?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Present.
Councilmember Papin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Leva?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All council members are present.
Very good. I will get the hang of trying to find someone who will do the pledge of allegiance. But if you will all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. You know, I see President of the Historical Society, Mr. Muniz, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. It would be my honor to do so, Mayor.
Thank you.
Please place your right hand over your heart or salute if you're in the military or ex-veteran. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Okay. Tonight, we'll start with our presentations, and I apologize, I haven't pulled mine up yet. If you'll bear with me for one minute. Okay, now I know to print them out. City clerk, I'm going to have to go to the website to get hip housing. My apologies.
Oh, it's okay. So would you want me to call the speaker for you?
If you could get her ready, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Okay. So the person that I'll be presenting is Clarice Veloso Lugo from Human Investment Project Hip Housing. She is the Development Director. Clarice, are you here? I believe I see you earlier.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, thank you so much.
City, I apologize, there is no link from the website for this presentation. Oh, this is a presentation?
Yes.
Hip Housing, please, please start your presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Clarice Veloso Lugo, and I am the Director of Development for Hip Housing. I'm here tonight because I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor and all the members of the Council for the City of Millbrae for your continued support of our organization. As a token of our appreciation and as a reminder of our partnership throughout the year, I'd like to present the Council with Hip Housing's 2021 calendar. You see the image on your screen. This is the cover of our calendar. This is our organization's 19th calendar. It's filled with information on Hip Housing's affordable housing programs, and it showcases the artwork of children throughout San Mateo County. The children are asked to submit a drawing of a home along with a quote of what home means to them. Twelve winners were selected to create this beautiful calendar, and this year, our cover winner could not be even more, could not be more appropriate. So if you look at the detail on this picture here, you could see how Ashkara, who is the artist, synthesized all that's going on in her world and in our world. So each year, we house over 1,400 people through our programs. And in your city, in the City of Millbrae, we currently have 20 people in home sharing matches and four people in our self-sufficiency program. So with COVID, more than ever, people are suffering, and our programs can help. We hope that you can display our calendars proudly and continue to refer people to our programs. We hope this calendar will stand as an important reminder of how essential housing is, especially for everyone, including our children. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Veloso. Any comments from council?
Through the chair?
Please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just want to say that I look so forward to this calendar every year. It brightens my day. I keep it in my kitchen. And there's not a day that I don't look at it because I still use the old-fashioned calendar in so many ways. But it brightens my day. The drawings are spectacular. Thank you for sharing with us.
No, thank you so much for saying that. You made my day.
I'm only seeing a small portion of our faces, so if you're waving at me, I can't see them. Other council members? If not, Ms. Veloso, I get your HIP updates every month. Both people who would like to live here in Millbrae, usually they're saying, "I'm looking for a room to share from Daly City to Millbrae," or "I've got a home here in Millbrae." How can our residents who may have a room that they would like to rent, they can get a little extra spending money, help pay for utilities? And tell us a little bit about how you match personalities.
Yes, thank you for that question. So our home sharing program has been around since the 70s. It's been a resource for people all over the San Mateo County community. And now, especially now during the pandemic, more than ever, housing is very much needed. But as you can imagine, we have less people who are willing to open their homes because of the threat of COVID. So we're having a difficult time in matching. There are more people that are looking for a place to live than those that are offering a space in their homes. We're working really hard. We asked about matching. We do our best in matching people based on our intake process. It's a very thorough process. We ask them everything from their habits, what their likes and dislikes are, what they would expect of a housemate, and what a perfect housing situation or home sharing situation would look like to them. And based on that, we make the match. The average match in our program is three years, but we've had matches that have lasted over 20 years. So it just depends on the folks that are matched and what needs are.
Well, I'm hopeful someday to use your service, and I'm looking for a roommate who likes to garden.
I think we can make that happen. We have a lot of gardening enthusiasts that apply.
Terrific to hear. I don't see any other questions. Again, I think hip housing is a valuable component of that niche that we need for people of lower and middle-income areas. But it's also the friendships that people can make with each other, especially if you're living alone by yourself. So thank you for everything that hip housing does, and thank you for coming to our council meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, I see many people with a Lunar New Year Festival flag behind it. Our next proclamation is to celebrate Lunar New Year, and I, one second here. So I know we've got people in the room. Whereas in celebration of the Lunar New Year, the City of Millbrae joins many families around the world to welcome the Year of the Ox. This year, the Lunar New Year falls on Friday, February 12, 2021. And whereas the Lunar New Year is a special holiday, which signifies a time for families and friends to carry on the tradition of welcoming and preparing for the new year, as many of these traditions have passed down from generation to generation, new ones have been created along the way. And whereas the Lunar New Year is associated with several myths and customs, whether celebrations involve sharing a traditional Lunar New Year dinner or attending a lunar festival, there is always one common theme, which is family. And whereas whereas the year marks the Year of the Ox, which is second in accordance to the Zodiac Animal Order, each Zodiac animal represents their own unique qualities. According to tradition, the ox is a symbol of diligence, perseverance, and honesty. And I will say, what a year to come, following our Year of COVID, so perfectly timed. And whereas during the Time of Joy and Renewal, the Lunar New Year, celebration is an opportunity to educate and promote the rich cultural heritage of our communities. The City of Millbrae recognizes the contributions from our Asian organizations and businesses. And whereas the City of Millbrae wishes all of its residents good health and prosperity as we welcome the new Lunar Year, now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do proclaim February 12, 2021 as as the celebration of the Lunar New Year. And it is my understanding, we have, I believe, almost the entire board of the Millbrae Cultural Committee. So, Millbrae Cultural Committee, would you like to say, I see Marion Kong? Is Marion accepting? Elaine, if you could please unmute, unmute, unmute. If you could please unmute Ms. Kong? Following-
I'm here. Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Marion.
Thank you, and Happy New Year for all councilperson. Thank you.
Mayor Schneider, thank you for this nice proclamation. And first of all, I want to say it was a lucky organization in Millbrae that we have received government, city government, and then city council, like you and all the other council member, support in the past two years. And then with these, of course, with the horrible COVID-19 time, we're not able to put up the in-person parade, firecrackers, and then the street fair. So we, the whole war brainstorm, we say, "How can we preserve this holiday? How can we bring the spirits and then the hope to the City of Millbrae community?" Then we approached the MCTV, and then, and they, I also want to thank them for partnering with us to put up a virtual celebration. And then our focus this year is actually is that all these children who got stuck at home to do the online learning and cannot even get out of the house, and then all they can do is do some Zoom learning instrument, you know, movement, any kind of thing, and then practice at home. So we focus on inviting these student artists, amateurs, to submit, to present their artwork, and then we can put it into our program to showcase to the entire Millbrae community. And then also, we also had, also want to thank the Assembly, the State Assemblyman Kevin Molin. He is a great supporter to us. And then the new State Senator, Josh Becker. He is also up to hand to support our event. And then, so we also, so the little highlight about our celebration, we incorporate a lot of wishing messages, new hope for next year from various local groups, individuals, businesses, corporations, schools, and any kind of a level of a city government. And then, so we collected so many good wishing message, good luck, and I know next year will be a good year, okay? And then we also have a community, the local Palestine community is performing some kind of their folk dances. And then, so that's a very great pleasure. And a couple more highlights, we have siblings, brothers. They are performing their duet instrument, and then with some wishing Happy New Year songs. And we have a lot of young folks. And another one is, we have a very deeply dearhearted message from Taylor Middle School student. What's their expectation and their hope for the next year to come? Anyway, so it would be great. And then there's a virtual celebration. It's going to be take on at 10:30 on February 13, the coming Saturday. It's on mctv.tv, also cable 27, Comcast 27, AT&amp;T 99. I hope everybody join us. This is the time this community had to hold together. And then that's work for a better year to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. I see another one of your board members, Mr. Muniz.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, and good evening. Millbrae Cultural Committee Board Member John Muniz. I want to take this opportunity to give a big thank you to the Millbrae Cultural Committee Board for their hours of hard work and diligent effort to produce this year's virtual Lunar New Year Festival video celebration. Also, the donors whose generous donations made this celebration possible. And a big thank you shout-out to Millbrae Community TV for their technical support and guidance, which made this video a reality. And the great City of Millbrae for their continued support of the Millbrae Cultural Committee. Hope to see all our friends and neighbors on Saturday, February 13, 10:30, on Comcast Channel 27 or AT&amp;T Channel 99, or on the web at www.mctv.tv for 90 minutes of fun and entertainment. Thank you, and Gonghe Fat Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. And now we've got, oh, Councilman, our former mayor Lee has dropped his hand. Councilman, or Mr. Wayne, Mr. Lee, if you would like to speak, I'll just look for you. You're back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, also want to also reiterate the thanking our mayor for being our Grand Marshal this year. It's quite an honor. We thank you for, and there's a message that's going to start off, and it's recorded by the mayor. So we're looking forward to that. Not to put you on the spotlight, but I know you already did, so that's great. So again, we like to thank MCTV, and just for the audience, people who are not familiar with what Lunar New Year means to the Asian culture, it's not just Chinese. It's the Asian culture, and what it means is the celebration of the harvest of every year. It means renewal of life. It's an opportunity to pay homage to our ancestors and just be grateful for the things that we have. So we're grateful for being healthy. We're grateful for our friends, and we're grateful for the vaccine. So, and this is an opportunity for everybody to celebrate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And Board Member Alice Kwong.
Hi, Mayor. How are you?
Very good.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for giving me an opportunity. But we look like he say almost every single word I say already. So a few years ago, and we are trying to set up the committee, and we finally, we decided it's called Cultural Community because Millbrae is an international small town. So our common goal is one, Millbrae continue to become a safe and united and peaceful city. Everyone love each other. Everyone share each other. And let our city continue to grow. And everyone, please join our Lunar New Year Festival on the TV. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy Gonghe Fat Chow.
Thank you.
And council members, any comments from council? Council, I can't see your faces right now, so if you could raise your hand. Please, Councilman Fung.
Thank you. I want to thank, you know, Millbrae Cultural Committee, the entire board here tonight. Every year, all you volunteers have put up this great effort in celebration, one of the most important holidays of the Asian-American culture, which is the Chinese New Year, and it symbolizes family reunion, symbolizes good health for the next year. And, you know, our former mayor has put it so delicately, paying homage to our ancestors as well, and just being grateful and thankful. Especially this year, when the entire country, entire world, has been hit by such pandemic. And yet, we're so fortunate that we're able to celebrate this Lunar New Year among our family members, and the vaccine is now in the works. We're at the end, we're seeing the light at the end of that tunnel here, hoping that we can end this pandemic sooner rather than later, and just have an opportunity to celebrate, you know, with our family, the old and the youngs, right? And to remind them how important it is that family to come together and enjoy and be able to celebrate this one of the most important holidays among the, you know, the Asian-American culture. So thank you so very much for MCC, all you volunteers spending kindness of time and hour and the donation as well, putting this together. And also, you know, MCTV for their excellent work in supporting this effort. Very, very thankful and very job well done among everybody. A big hands to everyone that is involved. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Councilwoman Papin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Fung said, thank you to everyone. This is really an event that brings our community together. It has shown our strength throughout the years. It is just such a wonderful, wonderful event. Other cities have mimicked it, or tried anyway, let's just say. So proud of everyone who has put this on year after year, and especially this year. Thank you so much for pivoting and going virtual and really continuing to bring the community together. This is what makes Millbrae so very, very strong. So Gonghe Fat Chow to everyone, wish everyone great prosperity and health in this new year, and look forward to seeing everybody once again as the vaccines roll out, and we're just going to keep our masks on, but keeping everybody safe. Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, other council members? With that, I will close, saying that, yes, I thank you for the honor of being the Grand Marshal. I'm bummed that we won't get to ride in our historic fire engine, but again, you all have shown incredible flexibility in this time, and you give all of the city hope for moving together and moving us forward. And I hope you will, I hope everyone watching this tonight and watching this on tape will take the time on Saturday to watch the presentations. I know that Millbrae Cultural Committee and Millbrae Television have worked really hard, as have all of the performers. It's what makes Millbrae a small town. So Happy New Year to all, and good luck to all of us in the next year, and Gonghe Fat Chow. Okay. Now, coming up next, if we have City Manager, and we have our Employee of the Year, Amalia Peña. I'm gonna, I pulled it up already. Amalia, oh no. Our next on our list is a commendation to our Employee of the Year, Amalia Peña. Whereas Amalia Peña was nominated by her colleagues and awarded the Employee of the Year on January 15, 2021, in recognition of her outstanding performance. And whereas Amalia Peña has served with distinction as an accounting technician with the City of Millbrae for over 20 years. And whereas Amalia is an exemplary employee who gets above, who goes above and beyond to complete the numerous tasks in a proactive and thorough manner. And whereas Amalia responds to inquiries by respectfully listening and answering questions regarding water and sewer service. And whereas Amalia is a critical member of the Finance Department who steps up and assists where help is needed to get the project or task completed. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Amalia Peña and the city's new feature of words at the bottom, I can't read. But thank you, Amalia, for your outstanding performance for the City of Millbrae. And I believe we've got both Finance Director Sung and the City Manager and Amalia with us, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. And just real quick, Amalia's been with the city for many years, very outstanding employee. And just want to tell her thank you for all the great work and dedication of the city. Well-deserved, outstanding employee, and her being the first is just a little bit more special. So we'd like to thank Amalia for the great work that she does, and congratulations.
Way to go. Amalia, are you with us? Do you want to have us put you on the spot here?
Yes, I am here.
There you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I just want to take a minute to thank all of you for this commendation. I was truly surprised when my name was mentioned as the Employee of the Year. And now, I am honored to receive this commendation from the City of Millbrae, which I'm very proud to work for. I also want to thank my coworkers as we work as a team, and I cannot complete my responsibilities without them. So thank you to Michael, Becky, Angel, Nerissa, Nick, Kathleen, our Finance Manager, Wayne, and our Finance Director, Mike Sung. And also to my meter readers at the Public Works Department. Just in case you didn't know, 2020 was a difficult year, to say the least. But I was able to learn and adapt to a new way of doing business, like this meeting tonight. But my priorities remained with the residents and their needs for the City of Millbrae. So I want to thank you again for this commendation. It makes me very proud to work for the City of Millbrae. Thank you all.
And thank you. Council, anyone from council comments? I can, okay. With that, Ms. Peña, thank you. You have a hard job, you know. I see Councilman Holliver. Councilman Holliver, please go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to say congratulations, and thank you for many years of service to the city. And congratulations, a well-deserved award, and wish you all the best going forward. And congratulations to all the winners that were honored this year as well.
Thank you, Councilman Holliver. Vice Mayor Leva?
Yes, I wanted to express my congratulations as well. And I can't wait to see you back in the facility because we miss seeing that beautiful face and that beautiful smile. So I'll look forward to that. I'll make sure that when we're all back with, with or without a mask on, but able to be out and about, we'll come and congratulate you in person.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Papin, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Papin?
Congratulations, Ms. Peña. Fabulous. It's so nice to really get to know the employees and such dedicated employees like you. Thank you so much for your hard work and effort, particularly if you have to answer questions about the water bill and everything else. Medal of Honor for sure. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Papin spoke it. You've got that tough job with probably the number-one complaint of our residents, and someday we can hopefully make things better, but right now, we can't. And I thank you. You're always smiling and always kind and considerate, no matter how angry a caller may be. It's a tough job. You've worked for us for 20 years, hopefully 20 more maybe. But thank you so much for all your years of service. And take care and keep safe.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yes, please, Mr. Councilman Fung.
Yeah, thank you, Amelia, for your hard work and, you know, the long-time service you have here at our city. Most people don't get to see our work, our city employees, and how hard they work and how much work and effort they put in, just to service our city of 23,000 strong. I just want to express my heartfelt thanks to you. This award is, you know, it doesn't even begin to describe how much work you put in and the dedication that you put in for the last 20 years. So, and just like Councilwoman Papin just said, answering-
and just like Councilwoman Pappan just said, answering questions about water bill is one of the most difficult job in our city. And big hands to you on that. And also congratulate the entire, you know, finance team on achieving such excellent work. Be able to get much better credit rating for our city, which helps us in the long run in terms of our lowering our borrowing costs and the finances as a whole. So big hands to the entire team, to you, Amelia, as well. Thank you so very much for your dedication and look forward to seeing everybody back in the City Hall when everybody get their jab in the arm. Thank you so much.
Or two jabs in the arm. Thank you. Take care. Okay, next up on the agenda, Police Bureau Chief Kunkel and Honoring Deputy Edgar Manila commendation. And I'm looking to see if I've got the chief. Do we have the chief here? There, I see him. Whereas Deputy Edgar Manila of the Millbrae Police Bureau San Mateo County Sheriff's Office was on duty on April 27th, 2020. And whereas Deputy Manila responded to the scene of a three alarm structure fire at 1007 Hemlock Avenue in Millbrae. And whereas Deputy Manila entered the burning apartment complex and rescued an adult and two toddlers. And whereas Deputy Manila returned to the burning building to save two elderly residents at great risk to his own personal safety, causing him to suffer from serious smoke inhalation. And whereas Deputy Manila displayed true heroism in the face of danger and was awarded the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Medal of Valor for these actions. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Deputy Edgar Manila for his act of valor in the service of the City of Millbrae. And that truly comes from our heart. Thank you so much, Deputy Edgar Manila. And I, I don't know if we want to have the deputy go first or Chief Kunkel? I'm looking for hands.
May I start?
You certainly may, sir.
I just want to thank Deputy Manila. For those of you who don't, this is his second Medal of Valor for saving people from the fire, which kind of leads us to believe as good a cop as he is, he may have actually missed his calling and should be working for Chief Byrne of Incestral County Fire. He's a tremendous asset to us. And besides the great work he does and the work he did, I also want to recognize his wife Pamela, who was an angel through this. Every police and law enforcement spouse's worst nightmare is the blocked phone call or the knock on the door. And as far as I know, Pam's gotten that three times, I think, since Edgar's worked with us. And it's scary when he's not dead, but he's hurt. And he had to go to the hospital and stay in the hospital for a few days as a result of this. And because of COVID, Pamela couldn't even visit him. So I really want to recognize her strength and what she went through as well. I know this was hard on Edgar. Edgar's the most humble guy, I think, in the sheriff's office. He really plays down the great job he does and the phenomenal work he did this day. It really reflects well on us as a profession, but also I think it's illustrative of the fine men and women we have served in our Millbrae Police Bureau. And I wanted to thank both of them tonight. I think they even have their new puppy with them tonight.
Oh, that'll be the showstopper, a new puppy.
I'm on the spot, but Deputy Manila, do you have anything for us, sir?
Yes, I am deeply honored on this commendation. Like I said before, it, it is something that we do as law enforcement officers and first responders. I am very grateful and afford a love and support from my friends and families, coworkers, and especially the Millbrae community. I'm also grateful that no one seriously got hurt and pray and hope that the people who are displaced and affected by this event are doing well and have a place to stay. And to a message to them that we're giving all our support to them. We're always thinking about them and whatever they need from the sheriff's office and the Millbrae community, we're always there. And from what I heard, we have been there for them. But I think some are still affected by this and I hope them the best. And again, I want to thank you for this commendation and it's something like, like I said, anyone wearing, wearing uniforms, anyone in the sheriff's office would have done the exact same thing. And hopefully I'll get back to work sooner than later. And this, when I get this complete recovery going, I'll be seeing you a little bit more and I'm very excited to be back. And again, thank you, Pam, for all your support. I love you and our little puppy is a little asleep right now. But again, thank you. Take care and again, very honored.
Well, thank you. I, I thank you and I'm sure we've got council members who want to thank you. Councilwoman Pappan.
Deputy Manila, thank you so much. God bless you. Wish you a speedy recovery and for, I mean, a lot of people don't realize every single day you guys put your lives on the line and it's like you've done this twice now. If I were your wife, I don't know if I'd be that patient, but bless you. Thank you for saving all these lives and really your service to the community. Thank you so very much. I do, I wish you a very speedy recovery. Please take care. Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Again, you said that you're grateful. We are so very lucky to have you serving here in Millbrae. As Councilwoman Pappan said, it takes a long time for our lungs to heal. Good recovery. Keep safe. And you've got a new puppy. I'm very jealous. Thank you for your service here in Millbrae and heal quick.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just real quick, Deputy Manila, again, thank you. We've spoke. And if, if any of you recall the picture of Deputy Manila handing the infant to their mother, it's an incredible picture. It should be on the cover of Time in Life Magazine. The heroism that just this gentleman displayed, as you've all said, is incredible. And he truly is a hero. And I congratulate him on his efforts and the great work in supporting the Millbrae community. So thank you again, Deputy and Chief. Thank you always.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilman Fung.
Yes, hi, Deputy Manila. Tom Williams sort of stowed a thunder here a little bit, but I'm going to repeat that because, you know, it is really the heroism that, you know, you know, the entire community owe you a great deal of gratitude of, you know, rushing into a burning building. This is not something that anybody can possibly do. I mean, and you did that in the split of a second and you did that more than once. And you know, a lot, a lot, know how many lives you have saved and the baby that you save, you know, he could, she could possibly be a future leader. So, you know, you save more than just lives. You, you know, you save a lot of people and a lot of hope for a lot of people as well. So extremely thankful, right? We're a very grateful city for your dedicated service. I wish you extremely speedy recovery. And everybody else on the front line working as a first responder as well, your heroism and your dedication every day. You know, we cannot thank you enough. Thank you so much, Deputy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And Vice Mayor Oliva? Vice Mayor, you might be muted.
Of course, I want to honor you and say exactly the same words that all of my colleagues here have said to you tonight. Hero, I guess is the best word to describe it. But I think that I'm struggling for words to, 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 to acknowledge what you did. And that's because actions speak much louder than words. And what you did, there's nothing to describe in a word. And I thank you so much for your leadership and for what you did for that, those families. And like Councilmember Fung said, the hope that you gave them that people are so good out there and we're such a great community. And again, I have no words. Your actions speak greater than any of those. So thank you and thank you to your wife as well. I probably shouldn't say it, but I will. Behind every great man, there's a greater woman. And God bless you. Take care and be safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, we are, we are grateful and we will hopefully be seeing you back here soon, even if you're just dropping by Starbucks for a coffee. That's where I went into several of you when I'm down there on my, my infrequent gatherings out of the house. But again, we are grateful. Thank you to you, your wife, your family, and be safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms.
Okay. This is another night. We're celebrating yet another deputy. It is clearly not last but least. Chief, you're still with us, I, I hope. And I think we have Deputy Zapata. I'm checking. We do. Okay. Zapata. All right. Whereas Deputy Jordan Zapata, Millbrae Police Bureau San Mateo County Sheriff's Office was on duty on September 10th, 2020. And whereas Deputy Zapata responded to the scene of a suicidal man with a knife call in Millbrae. And whereas Deputy Zapata entered the home and found the victim in a critical state of crisis. The victim was bleeding from self inflicted stab wounds and still armed with knives in each hand. And whereas Deputy Zapata expertly negotiated with the victim and used outstanding crisis intervention skills to get the victim to surrender his weapons so that he could get the critical medical and mental health treatment he needed. And whereas Deputy Zapata was awarded the Sheriff's Office Medal of Life Saving for these actions. Now therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Deputy Jordan Zapata for his it's this new transcribing, it blocks the words, for his act of life saving in the service of the City of Millbrae. Deputy Zapata and Chief Kunkel, please.
Zapata's with us. And before we give him a few minutes, I just want to, I know there's large nationalists in on. This was a very graphic scene. It happened very quickly. And generally, we're the first there and it was a scene where some of our other options to be used for less lethal stuff weren't an option. And the only option was to talk to this person and to have a guy like Jordan Zapata. We got people like Edgar Manila working in the middle of the day. We have people like Jordan Zapata working in the middle of the night. And doing a fantastic job of using the critical crisis intervention skills to get him to give up the weapons because we can't do anything. He has too large knives, even though he's bleeding. Very touchy scene for a very, for a good amount of time, but fortunately we have people like Jordan. Jordan is an outstanding deputy sheriff. He's one of my field training deputies. So he trains new deputies for the sheriff's office. He was a trainee tonight. He spent off of work for 52 minutes on watching. So he'll be going back to work shortly and continue to do their training. I'm very proud of the work he did, how calm he is and what an outstanding deputy he is. And this is a great example of us doing the work in mental crisis and doing it successfully. And we do this a lot more than the public knows. And we want to showcase how very difficult it is to part of.
Excellent. Deputy Zapata.
All right, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our entire city government for the recognition. Unfortunately, I don't have a puppy with me. I am here at work. So Deputy Manila is going to win this one. You know, I just wanted to take the time to thank everybody. You know, I touch on what Vice Mayor Oliva said. You know, our significant others, my wife in particular, Edgar's wife, the chief's wife, they're behind the scenes and they're very much in this job just as much as we are. So I think it's important to thank them. I grew up here locally. It's an honor to receive this award. It's an honor to serve the community I grew up in. There's much more of a personal connection there. And, you know, again, thank you. Thank you to everybody. The recognition means a lot. Thank you.
Well, and now you're going to have all the council members embarrass you. So hang tight there. Vice Mayor Oliva.
So Jordan, I had no idea. This is one of those proud moments as an elected official. I saw this on, on the agenda and I was like, that can't be Jordan Zapata. He's too little. I watched this.
Here it comes.
I watched this kid as a kindergartner and man, what a, what a stud. I'm so proud of you. You look amazing. Well, I think the last time I saw you was at Lenardi's begging, right?
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Yeah. And I, he, he was, we go way back. And I have to say, I've probably known him since he was about five years old. This is a proud moment. Keep it up. Keep it up. You're in good hands with that chief there. And I wish you the best. The future's, the future's huge, Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Jordan, and you growing up well. I guess we have to take it from that point, as the vice mayor have said. Thank you so much for your compassion and your communication skills in the community. Right now, we know mental health is a huge issue. And for you to come upon a scene like that and really maintain your calm and talk to the individual, that's really says a lot about you as an individual and as a representative of the Sheriff's Department and our city. So thank you so much. And Chief, aren't we going to talk about that puppy program at the police, at the Sheriff's Department? Weren't you going to bring in those puppies? Yeah, I mean, come on, we could all visit too. So congratulations. Thank you to your entire family as well. Bless you. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung.
And Deputy Zapata, you know, I, I guess I cannot thank you enough. And I think the one word that, well, one phrase that I would explain, you know, what you did is, you know, basically homegrown hero. You're local, you're here with us and, you know, both you and Deputy Manila as well. Putting, putting other people's lives ahead of yourself. That's what you did. And you did that in a split of a second, right? Being able to maintain that composure, maintain that calm and have that, that that intellect and be able to talk the man down and, you know, give up his weapon so that everybody's safe and everybody walks out of that situation, you know, without getting injured. That's, that's, that's a real skill and it says a lot about, you know, your ability. So, you know, we're extremely thankful as a police department, as a jurisdiction, as a city, to have you heroes here working for us, working with us every day, saving lives, saving hope, giving people hope. And we did so, you know, in this midst of this pandemic. So excellent work. I, you know, if there's a heroism award that I could give you, I will be the first one to motion that. So both of you. And Chief, maybe we can work on that, that program a little bit there. So nonetheless, you know, I'll let other council member embarrass you a little bit more, but thank you so very much. Appreciate your work. I'm glad everybody is safe. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilman Holliver.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Zapata. And also Deputy Manila, your acts of heroism are certainly going to be remembered for a long time here at Millbrae. And I think it really speaks to, you know, the training and the leadership that we have here in our department under Chief Kunkel, that, you know, our first responders are ready to respond to incidents like this, you know, in a split second type of decision. So thank you very much for all your hard work here and hope that this will be a moment to remember and in a very distinguished career.
Well said, Councilman Holliver. I guess that leaves myself, but I'm sure our city manager wants to say a few words. I would just say, which high school did you go to? Are you a Cap High or a Mills? Or did you go to Sarah?
I went to Cappuccino. The rivalry between Cappuccino and Mills was real.
Go Cap, go Cap. I think Councilwoman Pappan would be there too. You know, we are always told that domestic calls are the scariest calls to go to. And as you said, your wife, I'm sure worries about that every night. But you showed just what the country is trying to do is to handle people with, in a mental health crisis this way. I am so proud. And I, again, I'm sure it's the leadership of the Sheriff's Department and Chief Kunkel. We are lucky to have you here, lucky that you came out healthy and safe. And I just say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. And I'd love to say don't do it again, but hopefully we don't have many of these. But thank you. And Mr. Williams, do you have a few words?
Well, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, again, high praise to the Sheriff's Department, especially you Deputy Zapata. Again, a courageous act and another example of the outstanding service that we do receive from the Sheriff's Office and all the deputies that are out there with cool, cool heads prevailing and just, just really stepping up in a high level of professionalism and knowing that you're here and you sacrificed for this city and this community. So congratulations on a job well done. And we're always here to support you and
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, i- it is great to have true heroes, both you, Deputy Zapata and Deputy Manila. Have a lovely evening, be safe. I'm sorry, we can't all take a picture with both of you, I am sure we are missing that aspect of this. Have, uh, get back to work now, though, but be safe. Okay. I have to go dry my eyes out after that. Um, if we could have an agenda update, an agenda overview and staff reading, briefing from City Manager Williams.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Schneider, and good, and again, good evening to, uh, all the members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. So to round out the agenda this evening, uh, we do have, um, after the staff, uh, briefing, uh, calendar of events, reports and bills and claims, these are standard items on the agenda. Uh, there are no, uh, approval of meeting minutes this evening under item three. Also, under item four, there are no oral reports from any city committee or commission. After that, we have, uh, public communication, and this is where any member from the public uh, can speak to the City Council on any agenda, on any item that's not on the council agenda this evening. Speakers are limited to, uh, three minutes of time. Then we move on to, we have no consent items, uh, this evening on, on the calendar. Then we move to public hearing. Public hearing item number five, uh, is to consider adoption of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter ten point oh five of the Milbury Municipal Code to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering specific plan reimbursement fees for the Milbury Station Area Specific Plan. This will be, uh, an introduction of the ordinance, so you'd waive the first reading, uh, and introduce the ordinance, and then we would have the second reading, uh, in two weeks, as well as a resolution that will follow, which, uh, establishes the rate and method of apportionment for the reimbursement. Under existing business, item number six, uh, we have an update of the Milbury Community Garden, uh, administration and maintenance, uh, and overall program review. Moving to new business, under item seven, is council discussion and appointment of planning commissioner for the partial term, the vacancy ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Item number eight is to consider a resolution approving the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program. Uh, that's part of the mutual aid program throughout the county. Item number nine is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of intent to participate in the San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item number ten is the Metropolitan Transit Commission play, Plan Bay Area Twenty Fifty Regionally Significant Projects. Um, this is something that the council's been asking for, uh, for review on the agenda. Item number eleven, uh, is a, uh, comprehensive review of our park improvement grant program status. Uh, then, uh, then we move to council comments. Um, Mayor, I should note, for approval of the agenda, there is a request to move item six, eight, and ten to the consent calendar this evening. Again, item six is the, uh, community garden, uh, review and update. Item eight, uh, is the San Mateo, uh, County Operational Area Building Safety Mutual Aid Program. And item ten is the MTC Plan Bay Area Twenty Fifty Regionally Significant Projects, uh, which is an information item.
And I, I understand that a council member has asked for that. My only comments on agenda item normally, and I didn't pull these off consent calendar. Item number six, I have an update of a potential partnership with the city of San Bruno. And, uh, number eight and nine both have to do with letting our residents know about disaster preparedness and what is involved in getting the city ready for whatever the next disaster might be, even as we are living through several right now, and we've already had the first fire in San Mateo County in January. And then I believe, I am guessing that item ten will allow, um, our MTC representative, Councilwoman Pappen, to give us an update on that, so, uh, um, I, if we're, it's eight o'clock, we've already been going since five thirty. If there are other people that really wanna move something to consent, my comments on garden is pretty quick. So I think we can get through all of this fairly quickly. Uh, but I appreciate your request to put it back on consent calendar. Any comments from the council?
So is that, just for clarification, they wanted to move two items, six and eight, to consent and?
Six, eight, and ten to consent.
I, sorry, I think ten is really important, we've been, the council is uninformed on this. So, no on that one.
Okay. So I think we'll keep all of them with my commitment to be as brief as I possibly can. With that, um, we don't approve, we've approved the agenda, uh, moving along then. Um, I had one request of council, we have, I haven't checked the list, but I am guessing we have several candidates for planning commission. Do you wanna keep that later in the agenda so you have a time to think and, and listen or, or study? We haven't had a chance to talk about them, um, or move them up earlier in the agenda. What is your preference? I'm not hearing a preference.
Well, I think people, we have to respect people's time, so I would move it up.
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate.
Do I need a second to move it forward? City manager?
So are we moving it ahead of number five?
Yes, we would move it ahead of the public hearing.
I think we need a vote to move the items around, I think the mayor can just do that.
Okay. Then if I could have a motion?
So moved.
City Clerk, did you get that?
Who did the second I didn't hear?
I seconded, Councilman Fung.
Councilman Fung.
Okay.
And if you could please do a roll call vote.
Sure, Councilmember Oliver.
All right, I mean, I, I don't think we need a, a motion or a vote to move.
Oh, I thought you said we did.
No, I said, I said we don't, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But consensus, though.
Sounds like there's consensus to do that.
Okay.
Without objection, you can do it.
Very good. The next, um, next on the agenda, there are no oral reports, so public communication. Uh, this is for members of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. And if you would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand. Uh, City Clerk, do we have anybody on the phone that may not be able to raise their hands?
I, I can't tell unless they call in by a phone number, but if you're on a phone, please go ahead and press star nine to raise your hand.
Very good. I see that we have, uh, Katie Nolan Stivoe. If you could unmute her, please.
Yes, I think I've been unmuted, thank you very much, um, Mayor, and thank you very much to the city council members. I just wanted to say how proud I was of our town for putting up the Black Lives Matter Milbury banner on City Hall for Black History Month. I, I'm saddened but not surprised that there was pushback in our community. But I will say, in hearing the testimony tonight of all the celebratory events, both for Lunar New Year, for the acts of the sheriff in the community, that I firmly believe that we're only better as a community when we're able to harness everyone's talents and that we really need to celebrate everyone who lives in Milbury and make them feel wel- welcome. And I think we can only do that by honoring everyone's history in our country. So I would encourage the council to continue this course, to continue to recognize the achievements of black folks in our community and into, in American history, as well as celebrating the other diverse folks who live in Milbury and make it a better place. So celebrating Asian Pacific Heritage Month, Hispanic and, um, Latin American History Month, the contribution of women and blacks, because it's only through drawing on all of our strengths and all of our experiences that we can truly be great as a city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Waiting to see if there's any further public communication. I'm not seeing any, so closing.
Amy, Amy has her hand up.
Oh. Okay, I, I don't see it, but please, um, Elaine, if you can unmute her. I'm looking for Amy.
She is unmuted.
Hi, I think I'm unmuted. All right, thank you very much, um, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council and, uh, City Manager Tom Williams. Um, I, too, with Katie, am a member of the Mil- Milbury Anti Racist Coalition. As a matter of fact, I was here two weeks ago, um, accepting the Black History Month, uh, proclamation. And based on some reactions we've had over the past week, I wanted to come forward and put on the record our mission statement. Uh, our mission for Milbury Anti Racist Coalition, and the reason I wanna do this is so you continue partnering with us. So you understand who we are, what we stand for, and wanna be with us on this mission. So our vision is a world where all human beings have the same access to resources, education, and safety, regardless of their race, religion, or social standing. Our mission, which is Milbury focused, is to lead the city of Milbury in creating a socially equitable society. And the way we're going to do that in our focused areas is through art, education, community organization, and to ultimately have advocacy and policy change. So I realized I still have some time left and I whizzed through that. So, uh, for those of you who may not know us, and I think many of you do, we're actually a pretty small group that does have some big impact. On, on a regular basis, there are six of us who form a steering committee, just six people in Milbury. That's why we need your partnership. And we do reach a lot of people, uh, last June, hundreds of people. We have a book group, it's about a dozen people, so we actually are quite small, very grassroots. And we're united because, uh, we formed our, um, uh, Raze. So Raze were our guiding principles at the very beginning. And Raze is, uh, we came together because we shared a common set of, uh, intents. So we wanted to raise anti, anti racist awareness in our community. And I'll the letter stand for other things, I can't find my piece of paper, so I'll just wing it. Um, and it's clear that in our community, not everyone thinks there is racism, but there is. And so, uh, we hear it from our, our children, um, we hear it from our neighbors, and we wanna work together to make Milbury a safer place for everybody. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Gina, if you see something, I don't see any other hands raised. Oh, I see Michael Kelly.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, and esteemed City Council. Uh, most esteemed City Manager, Tom Williams, big fan, uh, like, uh, Katie, uh, Stivoe and my wife Amy has shared. Uh, I'm on that steering committee with the Milbury Anti Racist Coalition, uh, one of the founding members. I wanted to go on the record, uh, I sent some correspondence to the City Council saying that I wanted to make sure and call out the bravery that I think each of you individually and as a group showed in putting that banner up. There are very challenging conversations to have, there's a lot of people in our community that aren't quite ready to, uh, maybe be open minded to the fact that racism is present in Milbury, maybe they haven't experienced it, maybe they don't believe it's there. Enough other people have and, and on a daily basis do live through that, whether they're, you know, indigenous people, people of color, black, brown. Uh, it's across the spectrum. I think it's really important as we talk about what our belief structure is around being an anti racist coalition. You know, we're here on unceded land of the Ramaitush Alori people, they never said we could be here, h- here we are. Um, the four hundred plus years that black people were enslaved and racism perpetrated against them systemically. Uh, great amounts of violence perpetrated against our black American brothers and sisters, uh, disproportionately by the police, three times more than any other race. It goes on today, and unless people like me, white privileged men, come to terms with the fact that it's not enough to be a non racist, it requires becoming an anti racist. You call it out when you see it, you become an ally, you've become educated, you share and you listen and you participate. And that's what we're looking to do. And I'm so proud to be a citizen of Milbury. I'm a relatively new citizen in the United States, I got naturalized in two thousand eighteen. Very happy to be voting, very happy to be putting my money where my mouth is. But it's something that, there is a lot of work for America to attain the potential that it's capable of. And I appreciate, again, the fact that the city went out on a limb and had those challenging conversations. It's a shame to me, the banner came down. Cities like San Jose, they've got that flag up on their building, they've got thirteen banners through their city. Tucson, Arizona, potential huge amount of racism, their, their city hall has Black Lives Matter up on it. Ann Arbor, Michigan, Washington DC, there are big cities doing this. I have faith, Milbury's gonna continue a positive path. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, I don't see any further hands. I don't have the full set of, of, um, Zoom photos up. All right, so with that, I'm gonna close. Public communication, items not on the agenda, nothing on consent. At this point, we've agreed to move agenda item number seven up, which is the council discussion and appointment of planning commissioner for the partial term vacancy ending June thirtieth. And I, I want to, uh, before we go there, tell the city council members, I agree, some of those questions are not my favorite questions. If you get time over the next week while it's still fresh, I would encourage you to send questions to Elaine so that she can look at questions that we think would be uh, helpful in choosing our cur- the new and future planning commissioners. We have, uh, uh, this position only goes until June, and I don't know what vacancies we may have in the new year, so we may be asking planning commissioner questions in just a few months. So definitely send questions that you think are more meaningful and that help us. Um, and to all of the candidates, I haven't had a chance to check and see if you're all still with us. Is it pro to call city manager for staff to give a brief overview, or do I do it?
No, Mayor, I think you can, uh, just, uh, open it up for discussion and, uh, nomination, a motion, and a second and a vote.
Very good, then. So for the audience who is watching this at home, the, all five members of the City Council met and interviewed four candidates for the vacant planning commission seat that was vacated when, um, then Planning Commissioner Fung was elected to the Milbury City Council. So we are, uh, we did meet with them today, just before this meeting, and we did not have time to discuss any of them. And I open it now to council comments, and then we'll take a motion, um, if we are ready to go forward.
Madam Mayor?
Please, go ahead, Councilman Fung.
Should we take some public comment on that item as well?
Uh, we can take public comment, I think what we'll do is get a round of us first, open it to public comment, and then come back. So if you have a comment now, you'll still have a comment later, before and after public comment.
I, do we, I didn't realize we took pub- public comment on something like this.
It was something that the city manager and I talked about, apparently, we.
Agenda item, so I think we have to.
Yeah, we do.
Well, then, I'd like to hear public comment first, then.
Yeah, I would say so, I mean, I, I still remember if I, my memory still served me well back in two thousand seventeen when I was, uh, running for planning commission, I think there has been a list of, uh, public comment before the candidates even took the podium.
Okay, um, I, I'm happy going forward with public comment. Uh, members of the public, if you would like to speak on agenda item number seven, if you could please let either Elaine or myself know. Okay, I see a couple of hands here. Um, if, Joe Chen, Mr. Chen.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're coming in great.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Snyder, Vice Mayor Oliver, and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Joe Chen, and I live in Milbury for more than twenty-one years. I want to thank all of the applicants applying for the position tonight to serve our community. And, uh, it is taking a lot of their personal time and effort to serve the planning commission. Tonight, I would like to support William Chan for this position. William is an architectural designer. He has extensive experience on residential and commercial building developments. And his professional knowledge will be instrumental to our city's planning commission. William and his family is very supportive to the community, especially supporting the Peninsula Chinese Business Association's charitable efforts for the student and local schools. William is a young, energetic professional, and he is enthusiastist, enthusiastic about serving the community. I hope he can be appointed to the position tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Uh, Mr. Chan, Nathan Chan.
Thank you, uh, Milbury City Council, for the opportunity to address you tonight on the matter of the planning commission appointment. Um, I was also, uh, quite impressed by the, uh, candidates that came forward and discussed, uh, their qualifications for this position. Uh, you all know that I've come to many city council meetings to talk about the importance of land use decisions in Milbury and how that slides and how that slides into much bigger challenges our city faces. So I do want to sort of remind you that even though this planning commission term is just until June, I think it's important to, and especially with the general plan coming down and the fact that it probably helps to keep people on the planning commission for longer periods of time rather than just breaking off that person's term in June. Given the importance of the general plan coming up, I think it's important to look to the candidates who've articulated bigger visions for what might be possible in Millbrae. You know, potentially the need to rezone more parts of the city to comply with RENA, the importance of land use decisions when it comes to climate change, and the importance of smart growth principles when it comes to looking at places in Millbrae. So that, I would just entreat you all to keep those criteria in mind. I heard several of the candidates articulate those very directly during their interviews, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Other public comments? If you can use the raised hand function. I can't see everyone's faces, so if you're waving, if another council person can see someone waving, please let me know. Okay, I don't see any additional hands. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Before that, Elaine, do you have anybody? Okay, closing public comment. Council comments. No comments? No one wants to go first? Tough decision.
Do the chair?
Please, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hollibur has his hand up. I can wait-
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Councilman Hollibur. Go ahead, Councilman.
No, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I was just going, I mean, it's hard to gather thoughts. I mean, we just got very good candidates in front of us, and it's, it's hard to just all of a sudden make a choice so quickly. I, I hope that, I was really hoping that we'd have more public comment to hear what anybody had to say. And I was curious, is there anybody on planning commission that's going to make a comment?
I know we have a couple of current planning commissioners in the room. I can't, last time we filled a-
If I may step in here just a point of order, I think there may be a Brown Act issue, but I'd look to our city attorney to opine.
Brown Act for an open meeting?
Well, if they're, just to be safe, I mean, if there are multiple planning commissioners and it's not a notice planning commission meeting, it's a notice, just precautionary, so.
Okay.
They're allowed to, they're allowed to attend and participate. The only prohibition is that they cannot discuss the business of the city amongst themselves during the meeting. But one nice thing about Zoom is that that's pretty difficult right now. So I think we're all set. But it's fine if they want to attend, and they certainly are allowed to. I mean, they could have made public comment, but.
Vice Mayor, I agree that it was four really terrific interviews, great candidates, all of them. It's, it's a very difficult decision. I will say back in 2018, the last time we filled a planning commission, we interviewed candidates, we did not make a decision that night, and we came back at a special council meeting to actually vote for that planning commissioner. Now, this is a short term, but in all likelihood, the person appointed now will continue to be appointed when we go into the new, that, that seat's new term. So if that is where the council members are and you want more time, I am open to that. I think it's a lot to take in, and it's a critical seat.
Well, that's kind of where I was leaving.
Thank you. I would support you in that. Anybody else? We're very quiet tonight. I know it's been a long week, and it's only Tuesday night.
Madam Mayor?
Please, Councilman Fung.
Yeah, so I understand that, you know, we just have a round of four really good interviewees. You know, first of all, I wanted to say, I'd like to thank the city and the city manager and Elaine for such wonderful work in promoting the vacancy. I think since the day that I sworn in, which is, I believe, December 8th, we spent almost two months advertising for that position, and we got some really good candidates coming in. I think originally, we had six candidates who were vying for that seat. And one of them dropped out for qualification purposes, I think. And then subsequently, we had another person, Mr. Michael Evans, who submitted his application, and as I was going through his application, it seems like he's got great qualification there as well, so I'm saddened to see that. Although, you know, the planning commission is a very important commission in our city, and we've got some really big projects coming our way, Rancho being one of them, and then, you know, a few others along the transit area, it's coming our way as well. So we don't want to be in this, for that, our, so that we don't wind up in a situation where we got that lot situation. So I would say, and I would actually urge that we make a decision as quickly as possible. Some great candidates tonight, we've got four of them, and I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Councilman Hollibur or Councilwoman Papin comments?
Hmm, Ruben, go ahead.
Well, there was a suggestion, and I think it was a good one, from Vice Mayor Leavitt to perhaps table this to another decision, to another meeting, have the opportunity to review the applications. I mean, I think that might be worthwhile to have a little bit of time to review the candidates.
Thank you, Councilman Hollibur.
I can go either way, though.
Well, we've got two that could wait, one that can kind of. So Councilwoman Papin, where are you?
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to get that much more information from the written applications either at this point. You know, I'm hoping that, you know, this is just such a short timeframe. Why should we make it even shorter by delaying at this point in time? We do have four fine applicants, a lot of great responses. And, you know, I hope that, I'm pretty sure, once we do select a planning commissioner, they do go through some training as well, as I understand it. Is that not correct, Mr. Williams?
Councilmember Papin, it is definitely something that we need to improve upon, but most certainly will upgrade our, our training program and onboarding for new planning commissioners.
So if we can have some discussion here, I think it's important that we try to resolve this tonight so we can get someone in the position and hopefully get them up to speed as quickly as possible. And as Mr. Chan said, you know, trying to keep some consistency here. How many are open, how many positions are open up in June? What are we looking at moving forward? Can somebody answer that?
City clerk, do you have? Oh, sorry, Mr. Williams.
I can answer that real quick. So there are two planning commissioners that terms expire. One of them is, is Councilmember Fung's position, which would expire the end of June, as well as one other planning commissioner. So if you were to push it out and wait for the full four-year appointment, we, we could possibly have two vacancies by then.
Yeah, I'm just not, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't, we don't know.
If that's, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know who's going to, you know, reapply or who exactly is up here. And Councilmember Hollibur was kind of going both ways on that. You know, I think some discussion at this point in time, again, the applicants were all great, they studied up, had definite ideas. When we got the messaging here, I think this council is very similar on the environmental aspects of our community, the general plan, moving things forward here, dealing with arena numbers, all of that. So I think it's, I don't know what, if the council waits, what more information you think you're going to get at this point in time? So I think some discussion is important. Do the two council members, the mayor and vice mayor, don't think?
I think, I, I think from my perspective, sorry, Vice Mayor, is just a chance to think about what each one said. I took four or five pages of notes and go back on that. I, I will say in terms of discussion that several of the candidates applied for multiple positions, and I am hopeful that the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Papin will have the other, the three of the other openings in there that I think are really good positions for a couple of the planning commission candidates. I don't want to discourage them from this, but just judging where their interests lie and the needs of a couple of those other committees, there could be some nice fits there. So getting a chance to think about it and see where the four candidates might fit within the existing planning commission. And I would imagine we could, I can't speak for the Vice Mayor, we can either hold a quick special council meeting or bring it back in two weeks. That position would still be filled for the rest of the, the term. Vice Mayor, I cut you off. I apologize.
Well, I'm willing to listen, but I haven't heard any conversation, so. I, I don't, I, my, I'm a little jumbled by the four, so I'd have to look at my notes as well that I took during the interview. But I'm willing to listen and recollect from, from any of my colleagues here. Councilmember Papin, if you want to start the conversation, I'll engage, for sure.
Okay. Again, I have, we had several candidates that really put the environment first. I think that was Seiji and Mr. Green has been impressive throughout. He really does his homework in reading up on all the laws and what the community goes through here. I think Mr. Chan, being a property owner and also kind of being on all different sides of like developments and stuff, that was important. I'm just throwing some general information out here. I did agree with one of the candidates that planning commissioners should not meet with developers. I don't know why that's, you know, they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing that. I think we should establish that policy right out of the gate. And so I'm, yeah, just jump in anywhere, anybody here, but I would kind of lean towards Mr. Chan at this point in time because he's been on the, the different perspectives of developments and design and different cities too, which I thought was important because we can learn from other cities and what candidates go through as far as experience-wise along those lines. So you know, being established in the community and having that kind of experience, that's what kind of stood out to me as far as the applications go here. Anybody else?
Well, I would agree with you wholeheartedly that he definitely had the most experience, and that stuck out to me as well with regards to what we were going through right now with, there's some pretty big projects that are coming in front of the planning commission. I really like, I really like the energy and the ambition of the other two that you mentioned. And I think probably that's, it's not my problem to pick one, it's, it's to only pick one. And
We might, we might be back here again in June. We don't know who's up again, but I mean, we could be very close.
Given the temperature of where we're at with planning, I probably would agree with you that William Chan has definitely the most experience and would probably, we'd be very lucky. He would be an asset to our, to our city, serving on the commission. I just don't want to kill the energy and the ambition of those other two candidates that were just-
I don't want to kill any of that. Oh, my God. It's so nice to have so many wonderful applicants, please. I hope I'm not communicating that.
Well, no, it's hard to pick a winner when they're all winners, you know?
Councilman Hollibur?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there were, you know, one of the things that stood out to me was that we heard a lot of very similar themes from each of the applicants, both in terms of the need to, you know, increase housing density around the downtown, the need to better connect our transit station with the downtown. And, you know, everyone seemed to be, have a very, you know, impartial approach to planning commission decisions and to establish precedent, which I thought was important. But also, you know, having, I think, a good vision for the future of Millbrae and also around climate change. Now, that was a major theme that was brought up a few times. So I think being able to help plan our city in a sustainable way is going to be important. I was disappointed that Mr. Evans withdrew his application at the last minute. It seemed like he had a lot of relevant experience in commercial real estate development. And, you know, hopefully if his, you know, employment settles down a little, but it sounds like he has some, you know, very busy work right now in a position that he has, but maybe if that settles down a bit and the position becomes vacant at a later date, I would encourage him to apply again and hope to hear from him. But I think in terms of the four applicants tonight, and this is, I think, a very difficult decision, a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm and excellent ideas from, from all four applicants. But I think Mr. Chan did stand out in terms of his experience in residential design, both residentially and commercial design, and experience both with the Millbrae planning staff and the planning and zoning codes of other cities as well. I would hope that he would not take any future, future work on Millbrae projects and would hopefully quickly finish the projects that he has in planning stage. So there'll be no future conflicts of interest.
Mr. Fung?
Thank you, Mayor. As a former planning commissioner, and I also serve as the chair, one thing about being on the planning commission that we wanted for not just years, but decades, and we always talked about it, is that we want someone who really have the good technical knowledge and be able to, you know, read plans and envision from the paper, just being documented on a piece of paper, but have the vision and what the development would look like. Right? So I was very fortunate to be able to provide that, that perspective while, you know, I spent three and a half years on that planning commission, and I, I hope that was useful. And, you know, today, you know, we've seen four really good candidates, like some of the other council member have said before. Everyone of them, very energetic. I'm so, what's the right word? I'm, I'm so happy as well as so encouraged to see, you know, these young leaders stepping up and, and really take, take the helm and be willing to volunteer and, and assume this very important role. This planning commission is a, is a very, it's one of the most important role shy of being a council member because they truly help guide the city's development moving forward here. We have some really big project coming into our city, and we, we really need someone who has the energy, who has the technical knowledge, and also have the vision to serve in that role. You know, speaking to each and every single one of them, Mr. Green, he was, you know, he was a software engineer, he's got, you know, some really good understanding. He mentioned the winner, housing needs, this is one element that, you know, as a planning commissioner that you'd be very cognizant about. And, you know, we're living through a housing crisis here in California. Being able to guide our development and our policy towards, you know, understanding the housing needs and how to provide that is an important element of it. And he also served on Transit Authority as well, so he's demonstrated that he could be a strong and dedicated volunteer in our city. Definitely someone we want to keep, whether it's on planning commission or other- Definitely someone we want to keep, uh, whether it's on planning commission or other places, uh, within our city. Um, you know, we've got, you know, many other commissions and committee that still need, you know, dedicated volunteers such as this. So, uh, he's definitely uh, a very good candidate that we like to consider. Uh, Mr. Sakiyama, he's, you know, living here and he also experienced Milbrae very well. Um, he's ex- he has expressed his interest, uh, in, in, you know, really excelling our environmental effort here, and that's great. You know, we would love to have someone who volunteer on our committee with that mindset. Uh, and I believe he also applied for economic vitality committee as well. Um, so that, that's basically tell us that whether or not he make it on the planning commission tonight, uh, that he still has an interest in serving our city. Uh, and I'm very encouraged to see that as well. So, um, just being able to maintain these talents within our city, it's, it's such a blessing. Uh, Mr. Jonathan Lo, um, political science major, uh, young leader. He obviously have expressed a high level of interest in public service, uh, and really engaged in our local civic duties. Um, at such a young age, being able to have that, uh, just, just be able to express that and have that wish and, and, and that volunteerism to serve. It's, it's a gift to us. It really is. Um, he speaks to about how to increase our revenue and our housing needs. Uh, downtown didn't really have enough of tax revenue, as everybody understand that. Um, and he uh, is able to articulate all these, you know, really critical issues, uh, of our city. Um, it's just, you know, have that understanding as such, um, early part of his professional life is, uh, it's really encouraging to see. As far as Mr. Chan goes, I think one of the most important element in selecting a planning commissioner, uh, is, and is one of the most difficult part as well, uh, is finding someone who has the technical knowledge. And that's what Mr. Chan has, and that's what sticks out to me when I was, you know, observing everyone's, uh, their background, their educational background, their professional background and the, you know, the experience leading up to this application. Um, you know, he graduated with a civil engineering degree. Yes, it's, uh, from the University of Buffalo. Uh, we've never had, and we always wish that we have someone that has a degree in either civil engineering or architectural background. And we've been, we've been hunger for that for years, and this is the first time we able to find someone who is willing to volunteer for this job with this level of technical background. So I'm very encouraged to see that. Um, he's very cognizant about what our cities need and be able to articulate those needs, uh, and I think that's an important element uh, for a planning commissioner as well. Uh, he has gone through the sort of effort and the, and the experience on going through different jurisdiction, one city after another and and being able to help his clients, you know, as a residential and commercial designer. Um, you know, developing plans, developing entitlement application. So he certainly is going to be someone who is going to be able to understand the plans and be able to force, be able to have a vision by looking at that piece of twenty-four by thirty-six paper and see what that development would look like in the end. And that is one, um, technical aspect, one technical expertise that the planning commission certainly needs. Um, and I think that would be an extremely viable, valuable asset for the planning commission. Um, he speaks to the affordable housing needs we, that we need as a jurisdiction. Uh, and so, you know, that clearly demonstrate he has an understanding, uh, how difficult it is uh, for us as a jurisdiction to try to keep the people that are so vital to us and be able to maintain, uh, you know, this affordable housing stock. Um, and just being, being experienced and working with property owners as well as planning staff. This is something that out of all the four candidates that we spoke to tonight, uh, he seems to be the one that has the most experience. Uh, and the understanding, the importance of transparency that he spoke about, uh, which is also a key element. As the city official, it's such an important role, uh, demonstrating the, uh, importance of transparency and be able to speak to that. It shows me that he has that level of integrity that we need. Um, so, you know, from that perspective, I think he seems to be the one that most stand out and, uh, and I think he should be the right candidate for us.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Feng. Um, city manager, there is one member from the public who's raised their hands. We've closed public comment, but for the sake of Milbrae, should I reopen it? I would love your advice.
Closed.
It's closed. I looked at the city attorney again to advise the council on procedure.
All right, I'm sorry, Eric. Um, you, you missed that opportunity. Okay, my, um, look at the four candidates. I heard three candidates talk, um, considerably about climate change and, um, at least, uh, two of them talking about smart growth. There's a whole set of principles that go along with smart growth, Grand Boulevard work. I, I like the fact that Mr. Chan talked about trying to keep both the, the neighbors who are going to have a new house uh, change or have a house change next to them. I definitely appreciated that, uh, very much. He definitely shows that, um, the heart that you have to have. It's something that I like from a couple of the current city, uh, or current planning man, or planning commissioners is how well they're trying to make sure that a remodel is going to fit within the heart of the neighborhood. Um, what I didn't hear from Mr. Chan was anything, uh, Mr. Chan, uh, Mr. Chan, I'm sorry. Anything about the environment, anything about Grand Boulevard, anything about, um, smart design. Um, so he is not my choice, but clearly I can be overridden and that's perfectly okay. I think he's a, a definitely of that, a candidate. I am concerned that he has projects currently here in Milbrae and that puts pressure on staff, even if they're, even if he's not trying to put pressure on staff. It puts staff in a, in a, a strange place. I also, having lived in other cities, have looked at planning commissions where you don't try to get every planning commissioner with the same background. So the three candidates, if I under- the other three candidates are all renters right now. Having a renter onboard gives a whole different perspective, per se. Having somebody who walks downtown gives a whole different perspective. And I absolutely have hope in the future, after hearing Mr. Lo and Mr., uh, where is he? Kam- Kamiyati, um. Um, they, they speak exactly where I do. And, and if they're not quite ready for planning commissioner, I can think of two committees where they would be a great fit. And, but that is up for, uh, Vice Mayor Oliva and Councilwoman, uh, Pappan to interview for the open slots in economic vitality, the open slot in community environmental enhancement. Um, and, um, didn't really see a, a cultural arts person in the planning commission candidates. But, um, my support is from Mr. Green. I know he has spoken at a lot of council meetings. He often keeps us honest in terms of balancing housing and the needs of renters and the sheer cost of living in our area. And I think it would behoove the city of Milbrae to have both someone who represents renters and someone, perhaps when there's a future opening, someone who's a landscape architect. The city has to do a lot of work with the way our houses have been maintained. The city is currently trying to do more code enforcement in that area. And I watched the two council, planning commission meetings ago where they actually talked about um, adding landscape plans to a remodel plan when it's coming through. And I, I think landscaping, green infrastructure is critical. Uh, both to stop us from flooding, but also having a, a city that is truly as beautiful as it can be. And I will say that I loved, um, I love the comments about, uh, the, 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 uh, tree cover on that. So, um, if it sounds like we are ready to go forward, um, I would not support Mr. Chan, I would support Mr. Green, but, you know, two good candidates, uh, four good candidates, two that I think are ready to step in right now. So if there's no further discussion, if you, if the four of you feel comfortable making a motion tonight, um, please. I, I see, uh, Councilwoman Pappan.
Uh, I will move to approve, um, William Chan uh, for planning.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Oliver.
Yeah, sorry, I think just for clarification, a couple of things, um, I, I believe I'm on the subcommittee along with Councilmember Pappan for the interview, so.
I know we.
I know there were a couple of changes at the last minute there, but, um, we certainly interview the other, other applicants.
That would be lovely. And if we could do it as quickly as possible, I know both committees would desperately love to fill that slot. And in fact, they would both be open to adding an alternate. Well, I think cu- cultural or downtown ah, community, economic vitality already has an alternate slot. So, um, if we could get that done and keep all of our committees moving forward, that would be great.
And, and one other comment, I don't believe any of the applicants were landscape architects.
No, none of them were.
I thought, I thought you said that one of them.
No, 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 I said in the future, it would be nice if we had that skillset to add to the planning commission.
My mistake.
Other planning commissions around the, the Bay Area actually slot. They'll have a landscape architect slot. They'll have a renter slot.
So we have a second?
So, uh.
Motion in a second.
Madam Mayor?
But yes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, just to address a little bit of what you said earlier, yeah, so, um, I understand and I've also considered that uh, element as well, where Mr. Chan, uh, he's, you know, he's got his own, um, it seems like he's got his own design business. Um, and he mentioned that he has a couple of projects in a pipeline, but so that's exactly what, you know, recusal is for. You know, we have a mechanism, uh, at which, you know, council member or planning commissioner can recuse themselves whether they are, you know, very close to the project that's being discussed or, uh, you know, done themselves or financially involved or, or have, uh, worked on that particular project. Uh, so, you know, that, the, that, that element of, of mechanism is always there to provide, uh, for that impartiality. Um, and so, you know, I myself, you know, in the past.
I appreciate that and I thank you for letting the public know that that was one of the items discussed in the interview. So thank you for that.
Okay, very well.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, city clerk, could you please call the vote?
Okay. Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Feng?
Hi.
Councilmember Pappan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Hi.
Mayor Snyder?
No.
Okay, the city council discussed and appoint William Chang to the Milbrae Planning Commission for a partial term vacancy ending on June 30th, 2021 by the vote of four to one with Mayor Snyder dissented.
Thank you. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Chan. I think you're going to be an excellent planning commissioner. I just was looking, uh, my shopping list just had somebody that's a little bit on the, uh, smart growth side on that, but congratulations. Uh, Mr. Green, I know this is your second time. I, I want you to ke- to keep moving forward. There was a councilman who just got elected in Foster City on his eighth attempt. So please don't get discouraged. And Mr. Lo, and I, I need to have your name, the other young gentleman. Um, I would love to sit down and talk to you about environmental things and finding a place where we can take your passion and help you help Milbrae become a better place. You are all very impressive. And like Councilman Oliver, um, I hope that when, uh, Mr. Evans' work becomes less busy, I would love to see him come back and try to get on a future slot for the planning commission. I, I, he lives down the street from me. He remodeled a house. Um, he, he just is so respectful to the neighborhood. So, uh, Mr. Evans, when the time is right, please come back. And I thank you all, um, and I thank you, city council, job well done tonight. Congratulations, Mr. Chan. Okay, it, I thought we'd be done by nine, so we're moving on here. Um, agenda item number five, a public hearing. Uh, agenda number five is to, uh, open a public hearing, adopt a proposed ordinance. And I'm paraphrasing, to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering specific planned reimbursement fees. Uh, I have heard that there are two ways council likes to do this. I am going to choose that, uh, we open up the public hearing. Actually, let me rephrase. We're going to have staff give a staff report, then open up the public hearing, take public comment, close, and then council discussion. So with that, staff, it is in your court.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Again, good evening, uh, council. I'd like to introduce Mr. Roscoe Mata, our planning manager. And, uh, just a, a brief introduction on this item. Uh, we do have an amended version, uh, that we received from the city attorney on the ordinance, so Mr. Mata will be bringing that up on the screen. There isn't anything substantive, uh, within the ordinance. Um, so just the minor changes that we'll share and then we would move and recommend that the city council adopt the version uh, that Mr. Mata, uh, will place up on the screen and go through the changes. So with that, I'd like to introduce our planning manager, Mr. Roscoe Mata for a presentation.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Williams. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Roscoe Mata and I will be making a presentation on the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan Reimbursement Fee Ordinance. I'm joined tonight by Jared Yan and Michael Conneran, attorneys for the city who assisted with this ordinance. But before I begin, um, as I men- as Mr. Williams mentioned, an updated ordinance with a few minor revisions, uh, was distributed to the council's email shortly before the meeting, uh, but I will pull, pull that up, uh, through shared screen after my presentation. The objective tonight is to adopt an ordinance which establishes the framework for the reimbursement fee. Once the ordinance is adopted, city staff will bring a resolution to the council that implements the ordinance and establishes the fee. The future fee resolution will include the methodology and the fee structure that will determine the future fees applied to parcels within the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan. By way of background, the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan was officially adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. At the request of Republic Urban and Developer for Milbrae Sarah Station, the MSA SP was updated in two thousand and sixteen. Milbrae Sarah Station and the Gateway Developers, uh, will be reimbursed from a fair share proportionate amount as future development occurs within the plan area. The update to the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan resulted in increased heights and densities in the specific plan area. As a coincidentally, the environmental impact report for the plan allows for future projects to tear off the EIR, EIR for uh, streamline secret review. So this is a map boundary of the specific plan, as you can see, outlined in red dashed. The, that is the boundary for the specific plan and the colored parcels are the parcels that are, um, within the area specific plan. And they're, they're colored by the height that are allowed in the different, um, uh, sections of the plan. This report's ordinance for you tonight is consistent with government code section six, five, four, five, six, which authorizes cities to impose fees on new development to compensate the city for reasonable costs of developing, preparing, adopting, administering the specific plan. The adoption is the first ordinance, uh, adoption of the ordinance is the first step to allow the city to recoup costs and reimburse TOD one, uh, also known as Milbrae Sarah Station and TOD two, Gateway Developers. This applies, uh, to specific plans generally. It does not impose a fee or specify the amount per parcel or the method for determining the amount at this time. The actual fee amount and that methodology to determine the actual fees will be brought back to the council at a future meeting, uh, through a resolution. The fiscal impacts of this ordinance, uh, there won't be any fiscal impact associated with the approved, approval of the ordinance. This ordinance allows the fee, the city to collect fees on certain properties within the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan and which, uh, to recover costs associated with the plan update. There won't, uh, no, the action to adopt the fee does not impose the actual fee at this time. Um, that, again, will, will occur at a future meeting, um, and that will be done through a resolution. So tonight's, uh, action, staff recommends that the city council introduce the proposed ordinance, amending Title X of the Milbrae Immunity Small Code. Waive the first reading and open a public hearing to adopt a procedure for imposing and administering specific planned reimbursement fees. Staff, uh, that concludes staff's presentation. Um, Mr. Uh, either Jared Yan or Mr. Michael Conneran is available um, to, to go through the minor changes to the ordinance and, um, I can go ahead and pull that up, uh, shortly.
Yes, so I, I can walk the council through the ordinance, uh, once you have a chance to put it on the screen. This is Jared. Okay, um, so there are a handful of minor changes to the, the ordinance that you received with your agenda packets a few days ago. Um, the first change, uh, is in section A. Uh, we struck the word new. I think these changes, we, um, we apologize for getting them to you at the last minute. We um, had a chance to discuss, uh, with one of the developers councils, uh, over the past few days and uh, they provided some useful feedback. had a chance to discuss with one of the developers councils over the past few days, and they provided some useful feedback, and we wanted to be able to provide you with the benefit of that discussion. So we, and many of these changes are a result of those discussions. So in Section A, we struck the word new, we want to be clear that this ordinance includes the authorization to impose fees on specific plans that have already, or amendments that have already been improved, specifically the Millbury Station Area Specific Plan. So on, Section D is the next edit, and this, this concerns when the fees are due. So unless otherwise stated in the adopt and resolution, the fees, initially the ordinance said that the fees will be due at the time the application for the first government approval, and now we are saying that the default is that the fees will be due prior to the approval of the first government approval. And so this is, this is a default position, as the ordinance notes, the resolution of that establishes the individual fees may adopt a different date of payment for the fee. But we think that in general, the fee should be paid at the time of approval of the entitlement, not at the application, just so that applicants who, for approvals, who do not have their approvals granted are not saddled with the fee. The next edits are in Section E, so this is a minor edit, the first one is that that any interest accrued on fees will also be placed in the same segregated, separate account as the fee, so that they will also be used for the purpose of the fee. And the second edit was an error that we had initially said that the fees will be or that parties who previously paid the costs of preparing and adopting fees will be reimbursed for the share of their costs. And what that should have said was that parties who had previously paid for the costs of preparation, adoption, amendment, and administration of a specific plan, including the environmental review, will be reimbursed for their fair share of the costs, this being the broader purpose of the fee. And the last change to Section E, we struck as determined by the city council. And we added the adopt and resolution will determine the method or allocation of the fee. That was not meant to be a substantive change, it was just a clarification that the resolution will will determine the method for allocation of the fee. The last change is an addition of Section H statute of limitations, when fees are adopted. Entities who are affected by the fees have the ability to challenge the fees under, as improperly adopted for any number of reasons. And we wanted to clarify that what statute of limitations applies. We'd initially put this in the resolution, and we figured that it would be simpler to have a uniform statute of limitations set in the ordinance. And so I think that's the last change, if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them now. Mayor Snyder, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Yan, and thank you, Mr. Mata. With that, could I have a motion to open the public hearing, and do we do a roll call vote, or is this by consensus?
I think without objection, you can just open the public hearing.
Okay, do I hear any objections to opening the public hearing? Hearing no objections, public hearing is open. I see one member for the public, if there's public, please raise your hand. Janet, former mayor Janet Fogarty, please. Elaine, if we can unmute her.
She's not muted.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I'm Janet Fogarty, I live here in Millbury at 1126 Hillcrest, and I have my law office in Millbury, 1001 Broadway. I'm here representing the Millbury Sarah Station LLC and its owner Vince Moosie. And I would like to express to the council that MSS supports the proposed ordinance as to its intended purpose, which is to comply with the state laws which require equity in the treatment of developers who benefits from general plan and specific plan amendments. And the requisite sequel review for that. When the city of Millbury did its amendment to the Millbury Station Area Specific Plan and their sequel review. MSS, Millbury Sarah Station, and the other developer both advanced the costs relating to that update. The ordinance allows the city to collect from later developers in that same area in order to reimburse the developers who advanced those costs. And approval of the ordinance will help to facilitate the development in Millbury of more housing in Millbury in that particular area, and are also smart, well thought out growth in general. We thank the staff and city attorney for the opportunity to work with them on this language before you. We're looking forward to addressing our great concerns more fully regarding the upcoming fee resolution that will be before the city council in the future. To address the particulars of how and to what extent the developers will be reimbursed for the overpayment of their fair share. But tonight, we urge you to adopt this ordinance before you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogarty. Any other members of the public would like to speak on this issue? Okay, closing public comment section, council members' comments.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I see a motion in a second, any comment, any further discussion? This is the fastest public hearing on record, Elaine, could you please call the vote?
Sorry, do we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, didn't I, oh, I thought I did.
Oh, you did, okay. Thank you.
Maybe I'm still learning the vocabulary, thank you, Councilman. Elaine, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm calling for a vote of approving.
Do you want me to read it?
No, I'm just gonna, sure. Okay. Councilmember Holliver.
Hi.
Councilmember Fong. Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Bye.
Thank you, the city council waived the first reading, introduced the proposed ordinance amending the chapter 10.05 of Millbury Music Code to adopt a procedure for imposing administering specific plan reimbursement fee by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving to agenda item number six, does staff want to give a staff update, staff report?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our recreation director, Ms. Mackenzie Brady.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council, I will go ahead and share my screen. All right, this is my presentation on the Millbury Community Garden Administration and Maintenance Information Report. An overview of the agenda, we'll review the background and give an update on the Millbury Community Garden. Give you the details of the county MOU as well as next steps, and that photo there is the upper garden, and you can see that beautiful arch that was created by Dave Martinez of our Public Works Department, and the community garden sign is thanking all of the volunteers who contributed their time and efforts on June 8th of 2019 when we established the community garden. Just as a background update, if you are not aware, the Millbury Community Garden is on the northern side of Central Park, in that bash rectangle. As I noted, on June 8th, 2019, the Millbury Community Garden was completed during a community work day. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic between March 25th, 2020 and May 7th, 2020, the garden was closed, and in May of 2020, the garden was reopened with guidelines that helped to keep gardeners safe. And because of the closure, gardens plot holder membership year was extended, so initially, the garden year went from July 1st to June 30th. And so it was extended from June 30th to October 1st, so the current garden year is now October 1st through September 30th. During this timeframe, we had 12 garden non-renewals in the upper garden and three non-renewals in the lower garden, for a total of 15 out of the overall 41 plots. But with the number of plot holders leaving, this actually created space for all the individuals on the waitlist, which is fantastic, so now everybody's off the waitlist. And we actually do have one plot remaining in the lower garden, and the upper garden is full with a potential waitlist. And during this closure, the Parks Division took advantage of the time to get up into the garden, they installed weed cloth in the upper garden and refilled it with mulch, and recreation staff helped to maintain the plots, to help out the vulnerable plot holders, a lot of our plot holders are seniors, and so we did not want to continue to tell people that they needed to maintain their plots during this pandemic, so recreation staff went into the plots and helped to prune and pull weeds, weed eat, as well as water the gardens. And currently, the garden team has a standing meeting on the first Wednesday of every month, and this is virtual. Is with the county MOU, so if you do not recall, the garden was established with funding from the San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, and then part of that agreement was an MOU for funding to continue to enhance the garden, and so the city is eligible to be refunded up to $5,000 for this current MOU for buying materials used to enhance, develop, and maintain the community garden. Materials are not expected to exceed this amount, these types of materials might be additional dirt, mulch, potential composting bins, maybe if there's a leak in a hose, we need to buy another hose or additional garden tools, and so that is what those ones would be used for. And then once these restrictions, the COVID-19 restrictions are completely lifted, volunteers will continue to help maintain the garden, which will relieve the maintenance time that is put in by the Recreation Department and the Parks Division. And here's another photo of the beautiful garden, and in the back, you can see this compost sign, so we have them in Mandarin, Spanish, and English, and it teaches community members and plot holders how to compost. Here's another picture of one of the plots, or a number of the plots in the upper garden. And for next step, staff recommends that the city council accept this informational report regarding the Millbury Community Garden Administration and Maintenance. You have any questions?
Thank you, Director Mackenzie, any questions from council? Okay, I have a couple of questions, Ms. Mackenzie. I'm glad to hear that there's no waiting list, I have been having conversations with Mayor Rico Medina from San Bruno. They have a community garden on SFO land, they have a three-year waiting list. Their community garden is also close to Lamita Park School, which is another area of Millbury that has a concentration of apartments, fairly old apartments. They don't have balconies, they don't have the opportunity for gardens. I know we are financially constrained, but the mayor, Mayor Medina and I are talking about, maybe this is an area of future work between our two cities for our residents that live on the east side of El Camino Real, and between that, and given that San Francisco also owns land right around Lamita Park School, maybe there's an opportunity there to enhance and add to our parks program. So I've got my feelers out for grant money, I certainly wouldn't be spending Millbury's money, given that we don't have anyone on the waiting list, but with my other hat on, and as we've learned through COVID, one out of four Californians are living without getting enough to eat every day, so community gardens are a great way to get that food in. I attended the last community garden meeting, and there was a mom there, and she had never been able to grow anything in her life before, she could bring her daughter there. There's nothing like that to make you feel good about a program that the city, and through Mackenzie's work with getting the grant, it's just such a marvelous program. So I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that I was in discussions with the mayor of San Bruno about where we might partner for the benefit of both of our residents. The other thing that we've talked about is possibly getting a plot for future growth of California native plants. If we do get back to being able to have a cleanup, we actually have a creek that is full of invasive plants. If we had our own homegrown California natives that go in a riparian habitat, we don't have to pay for them, and the public, when we can have a community workday, can come together. And I'm talking about the creek just to the north of Rotary Park. That's a perfect opportunity for a creek restoration project in there, so plots can come in handy even if we're not renting them out, so that's all I have to say. It's a fabulous project, Mackenzie, and I'm so happy you got the grant, and for former Mayor Lee, for letting me get to work with both of you to create it, it's just a fabulous asset to the city.
Do we need to move to accept the report?
No, I got one quick comment, Madam Mayor.
Oh, please.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mackenzie, for putting this report together, and I was also on the Youth Advisory Committee last week, and then they were working on a program to do compost. And so I would say if you guys can work with the Youth Advisory Board to try to come up with a program where they can help, you know, doing the compost program. That would also help, you know, your community garden as well, so appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fong, yes, Hannah Moran, our Recreation Services Manager, is working with Youth Advisory Committee, and she's also the individual overseeing the garden. And so that, once COVID restrictions are lifted, they plan to work with MCTV to develop and produce a composting video that would be broadcast on MCTV and also be used for the plot holders and the community members as well.
Thank you, Director Mackenzie, if people are interested in a plot, perhaps once they've gotten their two doses of the vaccine, can they still find that information, and where would they find it?
Yes, so they can go to our registration website, and the shortened link for that is bit.ly, B-I-T slash L-Y dot O-Y slash milrec, M-I-L-R-E-C. Bit.ly slash milrec, they can also contact our Recreation Services Manager Hannah Moran at H Moran, M-O-R-A-N, at CI dot Millbury dot C-A dot U-S.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, this is agenda item number eight, resolution approving the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program Mutual Aid Agreement, and city manager, do we have a staff report?
I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Ms. Darcy Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'll be making the presentation tonight on this item. And I apologize, it looks like it's not advancing the slides, so hold on, let me just restart this. Always Zoom issues, aren't there? Okay, can you see this presentation from the beginning, yeah. So I'll be making the presentation tonight, Darcy Smith, your Community Development Director, and also assisting me in answering any questions you might have, is Bill Riley, the Emergency Service Coordinator, who is employed with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Operation of Emergency Services in the Millbury Bureau. So this is the item for the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program Mutual Aid Agreement. The objective of this item before you is to adopt a resolution approving the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program Mutual Aid Agreement. And first, I'll start with some brief background on mutual aid agreements, you've probably heard of them, as they already exist among police, fire, and our public works departments in the county through separate agreements that have also come before you, or approval, or through your agency partners. This agreement is specific to provide participating agencies with an organized and efficient means of voluntary mutual aid by the interchange of building safety inspection services and also resources to neighboring jurisdictions in a time of need. Building inspectors are highly trained and specialized personnel who have to provide the required safety inspections of any affected buildings following an emergency that could include a fire, flood, earthquake, heavy storm, or even a human-related emergency, such as a transportation or aviation disaster affecting buildings or structures. Perhaps a gas explosion or hazardous materials leak, and these inspectors are really critical to perform the inspections that are needed to clear those structures for human habitability. And these inspectors are really, really critical to perform the inspections that are needed to clear those structures for human habitability or to assess them for the need of repairs before they can be rehabilitated. So there has been a documented need for this agreement over the last few years. The San Mateo County OES, acting in its current capacity as the Operational Area Coordinator, have encountered significant difficulties in obtaining building inspectors for mutual aid assistance. And this is often because the staffing levels for each jurisdiction is typically at the bare minimum. Again, it's a highly specialized role and they have to pass certifications to get into this role. And so it's typically a narrowly staffed role and we're just at the basic staffing. Heavy storms in this county, as well as fires, have created that increased demand locally. And this agreement was developed by the Office of the County Council. However, one emphasized there was extensive input through OES, through the city attorney, including our representation, who's here with us tonight, Mike Conneran, and the chief building officials. And many other jurisdictions in the county have already approved it, but many are still working on it, such as ours. With standard to most of these mutual aid agreements, this agreement will run until November 1st, 2029. And the Director of the San Mateo County OES will continue to service their capacity as they do now as the Operational Area Coordinator, who would invoke the need for this mutual aid. And when that local emergency is declared, the jurisdiction's coordinator may request assistance in accordance with agreement. And it's only extended provided that it does not compromise our own jurisdiction's ability or capacity respond to its own calls. Typically, we do carry a heavy demand for inspections. We're busy every day doing those inspections and if, however, the whole region was affected by something like an earthquake, we might see a dip in our sort of routine demand for inspections and then a peak in these kind of emergency inspections. And you'll see here sort of two foes. It just shows the extent of the damage that can happen. Even in a flood, there can be significant damage to the foundation of the house, not always seen to the naked eye, but it can damage the foundation significantly, need to be assessed. And in a fire, when there's partial damage, there needs to be real comprehensive structural assessment of that before it can be rehabilitated. Other terms of the agreement that are really critical for us to understand is that we have no obligation to provide assistance or incur any liability for not complying. It's voluntary in nature, but of course we would want to help where we can help. And if we requested assistance, we are required to pay for all those costs, including any administrative and contractual costs to the jurisdiction who provides that assistance. So this is really important cost sharing. There's also provisions for indemnification if there's any claims. That's a critical piece. Just important to note, this has no fiscal impact with approval of the resolution. Were we to request that mutual aid, there will be regulations requiring us to reimburse the assisting party. But one of the real critical benefits of this is it allows for the city to promptly obtain the maximum reimbursement from state and/or federal emergency funds, such as the FEMA funds. And without this in place, we're really at a disadvantage. We may not get the funds at the maximum amount and we may not get them in a prompt manner. So that's one of the real benefits of these mutual aid agreements. So in conclusion, staff's recommended action tonight before the city council is to adopt the resolution approving the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program Mutual Aid Agreement. And this concludes my presentation. And Mr. Riley and I are here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any council comments?
With approval.
Thank you. As the city's representative to the Emergency Services Council, all of these little pieces are part of the greater whole. And to get us into position that if we should have a physical disaster, something more than, than the four disasters that ran concurrently last summer and fall, that we can respond to it. So I'm very grateful to Mr. Riley and to Ms. Smith for moving ahead with this. I'm glad that we'll be part of the county program. Because we do talk about this when we get together on our quarterly basis. So thank you for that. I think I heard a motion from, was that Councilwoman Pappin or Ms. Aliva?
Second.
I'm not, motion by Vice Mayor Aliva, second by Mr. Councilman Holibur. Does that work?
I believe the motion was from Councilwoman Pappin.
Whatever works doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm going to say Vice Mayor Aliva, Councilman Holibur. Further, any further discussion? City Clerk, could you please call the vote, call the roll?
Councilmember Holibur.
Hi.
Councilmember Fun.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Aliva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
The resolution approving the San Mateo County Operational Area Building Safety Inspection Program Mutual Aid Agreement, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Moving on to the other part of emergency services themed tonight is agenda item number nine. Do we have a staff report, City Manager?
Yes, I'd also like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director for this presentation as well. Excuse me, it looks like Mr. Bill Riley will be providing the presentation.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I, before you tonight, we have a proposal for the San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that is a mouthful to get out quickly. But what it is, is a program that has been in place for a number of years. And as we go through this, I will, I can ask, all right, I'm gonna have to have City Clerk go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The objective here is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of intent to participate in San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional, Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Slide please. All right, as far as background on this, it was started, actually emerged out of the Emergency Assistance Act, the Stafford Act of 1988. It was amended in the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. It was to reduce the loss of life and property, human suffering, economic disruption and disaster system costs resulting from national disasters. We have been working through this for a number of years. Originally, the, the county worked as a whole through A-BAG, who assisted us in putting those together. But since then, we have moved on to do it within the county. If you notice on this thing, section 322 of the act specifically addresses mitigation planning and requires state and local governments to prepare multi-hazard mitigation plans as a precondition receiving, for receiving federal emergency management agency mitigation project grants. What is, one of the things we are always very apparent in all disasters is to make sure we have the paperwork and plans in place to make sure that we can be reimbursed during disasters. And this is certainly one of the basic ones we use. Next slide, please. The Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires the plan be reviewed annually and updated every five years. In 2000, it was established in 2005 was the first review that we did of the plan under the A-BAG one. Since then, we've updated the plan annually. And our last update, we update every five years. Last update was September 2016. And will expire in September of this year. San Mateo County as lead agency has been awarded a FEMA grant to fund the planning process and hired Tetra Tech to facilitate the process. We are fortunate in that the last review in 2016 was done by, was helped facilitated by Tetra Tech. And they also were successful this year in their RFP to do it for the next, next one. So they're quite familiar with it and it actually brings us together more seamlessly as we move forward for this next, next review. Slide please. The steps in developing the mitigation plan include conducting a planning process, complete a risk assessment, build a mitigation strategy and commit a plan to maintenance and procedures. This certainly has been taken place in the past. We will reevaluate each one of these as we go through. You can see that handsome devil in the picture right there. Key Lim, our Public Works Director, was involved in this for the last two, the last two times that we've gone through it. And him and I will be leading, we'll be the representatives from the city as far as the county plan goes as we move through the process. Slide please. What we'll need to do is attend online steering committee meetings, attend online public meetings, complete phased jurisdictional annex process and participate in public review and comment periods prior to adoption. As we go through this, we'll be taking our local planning group, which will include public works, planning, building, fire, and anyone else that is involved in our local mitigation plans. And we'll be looking at all of our infrastructure needs as they apply to our risk assessment. We know some of the ones that we normally have in place and they're ongoing, need to be coordinated in the county level, especially things like flood management, water control and things of that nature. So it is done cooperatively with our neighbors and the county. And then we identify those in our local jurisdiction and as we develop our, our local plan. Slide please. There's no fiscal impact associated with the approval of this resolution as it'll be our starting point as far as participating, participating in the project. And San Mateo County will fund the project through the FEMA grant. Thank you. Slide please. Tonight's action, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of intent to participate in San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any questions from council? If they're thinking, I have a couple for you. When I read the staff report and who would be involved in the planning, I didn't see Millbrae CERT listed in there. Is that because it's all staff as opposed to volunteers or can we add CERT?
It is normally staff is we're looking at mostly infrastructure recommendations, you know, as far as how we harden the, the, our jurisdiction against natural disasters. As far as the, we looked at CERT many times as help staff in function in the operational portion of it. And this is more on the, on the planning and documentation, you know, prior to that. Open to, you know, that avenue, but we will be having meetings with the public and do our outreach and certainly be a part of that.
Well, I would definitely like to make sure that the Red Cross and CERT are invited to that. You're aware, and I don't know if the rest of council is aware, that with COVID being more dangerous to older people and CERT volunteers tend towards being older, that CERT could not be as engaged in the COVID disaster. And it shows the need to get younger people trained in CERT. So if we have another pandemic that affects one age group over another, we have more flexibility. I understand that's not infrastructure. The, just an FYI, Assemblyman Mullin is, I don't know if he's introduced the bill, is planning on introducing a bill that would create a conservation corps for San Mateo County. I think we talked about that at the last emergency services meeting in September. And I, if we can get them, they can be a great asset to helping us get fire ready as well as disaster cleanup on that. So I'd like to see that that shows up in the plan. And I think I've spoken to you, I can't remember if I've spoken to the city manager, about contingency contracts for disaster cleanup. Because that's where cities get hit with fees because it becomes very competitive after a disaster to do cleanup. So I'd love to see some discussion of contingency planning.
Yes, we are working, San Mateo County just recently finished their, your process through their debris management plan, which we will be an annex of that as well. And so we work in concert with them. And I think that is where, I think you're leaning towards. We certainly, that is a very important issue that has to be taken care of ahead of time and certainly have those contracts in place. We've recently discussed the, the action with it. Having a, a, an organized methodology of contracting with those services is extremely important. We certainly don't want local jurisdictions in competition during, you know, during a disaster to do.
Well, it's not just that, that from the Northridge earthquake on, fly-by-night operations come in and they basically steal a city blind. So it's better to get real, true companies and not the people who come in, in a disaster when everybody's scrambling to get together. My last question, and I don't know if there's a place, but Councilwoman Pappin and Councilman Holibur with the REC Center, I know we are planning on upgrading the HVAC system so that it can become a center for safety from particulate pollution. We have talked about that, haven't we? And is that in the, at least please put it on the list because the filtration system is going to be critical if we have another particulate event like we had last summer.
It's been upgraded to a specific level for emergency services. I'm not sure what exactly the level is.
Excellent. I'm glad you guys are aware of it, just to make sure it's in there. My understanding is when this plan is done, each city is given a number of issues they've got to work on every year. That has never come back to Millbrae. It seems to all handle, maybe get handled at the staff level. But then when I go to emergency services, they talk about, oh, Millbrae, you have seven items. But I never knew what the seven items were. I just hope in the future that a report comes back to council with whatever items we have to do to make sure that we are working towards being as disaster-ready as we possibly can. With that, I, I thank you. This is also for the public to know all of the steps that go in for becoming disaster-prepared. So I thank you, Mr. Riley and Ms. Smith. Any further comments?
Mayor, just real quick on that question, the new recreation center will be an evacuation center.
Yeah, along with that, we have identified that earlier as far as in our mitigation plan in the last five year. One of the up, the annual changes we made was to identify the need for providing for evacuees. And with that in place, I think it should be able to free up or should I be able to identify funding to improve the, the REC center to meet those needs.
Excellent. So evacuation center is different than a shelter? Or is it going to be evacuation and a shelter?
Just about.
Evacuation center is different than a shelter, yes.
Okay. So again, hopefully when you come back to us, even if it's just an update informational memo, where are our shelters in Millbrae? You don't have to answer now, but usually then they become a church or they become Taylor or something, and I don't know where they are. And the Red Cross usually takes care of that and they update it periodically. So it'd be nice to have an update.
They, they were updated last year. Yes, we have, the schools are our shelters for the most part.
So predominantly Mills or the lower?
Mills is the largest of them. Taylor, they've identified all of the, the elementary schools and the, and Taylor. It doesn't, the housing needs or the shelter needs would be, depending upon the disaster, we could be, fill those quite readily. I think at Mills, it's, it's like only 100 people or something like that. It's not.
Yeah, and with COVID, it makes it worse. But thank you. That's good to know. It would probably be good for the public to know too. They need to know that we have planned for them in the event of a multitude of disasters. So thank you.
Yeah, the largest disaster right now, our, our plan is to use other facilities outside the city limits because we don't have the capacity right now.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion? I think this is an action. That was Councilman Fun, second by Mr. Holibur. If you could call the vote, please.
Member Holibur.
Hi.
Councilmember Fun.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Aliva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
And thank you. Sorry, Elaine.
The resolution authorizing city managers to sign a letter of intent to participate in the San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, passed by the vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you. Last two items, agenda item 10, Metropolitan Transportation Commission Plan Bay Area 2050, regionally significant projects. And it's an informational, but I'm sure we're going to have a good discussion here. So staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Key Lim, the city's Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and members of Millbrae City Council. Key Lim, Public Works Director. So tonight will be discussed, this is an informational items regarding the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, Plan Bay Area 2050. I am going to show my screen real quickly. Can all of you see my screen now?
Yes.
So, so let's move on to the next slide. So what is MTC Plan Bay Area 2050? That's a good question. So it is also known as the Regional Transportation Plan and also the Sustainable Community Strategies. So we have gone to a few rebranding about 10 years ago. It used to be called the Bay Area Horizon and it has been rebranded since the last update to Plan Bay Area 2050. So the last update was done in 2017. So it is a state mandated integrated long-range transportation menus and housing planning exercise that we do every four years. That is also mandated by law that we update the plan every four years. So why are we doing the update? The purpose of that is because we want to have a cohesive, sustainable economic growth in our region. We want to have plenty of affordable housing. And we want, we also want to have choices in transportation, especially those transportation choices that will reduce greenhouse gas emission. So in this update, C-CAG actually is one of the night county MTC regions. So every county submitted that project, C-CAG is spearheading the San Mateo County effort. So C-CAG began the process in March of 2019. And as part, one of the many components of Plan Bay Area 2050 is regionally significant project. It is a listing of projects that every jurisdiction thinks that they might want to implement in their region sometime around 2050. So Millbury submitted several projects and four of our projects got selected to be included in the Plan Bay Area 2050 in June of 2019. And MTC is expected to formally adopt the plan in summer of 2021. And the next update will happen in 2025. So the four projects I mentioned earlier that Millbury has submitted to C-CAG, which was subsequently approved and adopted and forward to MTC in 2019. And these four projects are capacity expansion project along US 101 and Millbury Avenue interchange. And the project is estimated to be around 16 millions in 2019 dollars. And the next project we have is the Grand Boulevard Transformation on El Camino Real, which is part of our specific plan that we, it's also called Road Diet. We want to chop the travel lane down from three lanes in its direction to two lanes. So this is actually pretty pricey project. We're looking at somewhere around 80 million. One, it is all implemented. And the third project is the High-Speed Rail Millbury SFO Station and Parking. This is simply a planning project at this point and the planning effort is estimated to be about 40 million. The last project that was selected from Millbury list was the Millbury SFO Airport Guideway Bot Track on Airtran Improvement. So this is a project you bring in a seamless connection between different modes of transportation by having a dedicated efficient services from Millbury Bot Station to San Francisco International Airport. So some of the other regionally significant projects in San Mateo County that I also wanting to point out, one of them is the Produce Avenue, US 101 interchange in South San Francisco. The other project, which is under C-CAG's planning effort, is the US 101 and Highway 92 interchange in San Mateo Foster City. And those are all part of the regionally significant project. So the first project that we want to discuss tonight is the capacity expansion on Millbury Avenue and US 101 interchange. As you could see from the pictures here. Pictures to the right is right before you get to Rollins and Millbury Avenue intersection. As you could see during pick hours, it get very congested and also those lanes are not fully aligned. So the only way to solve that problem is by adding in other lanes. That's why we call that a capacity in expansion project. And by doing so, we are also going to improve safety on our roadway, especially around the interchange and also relates congestion. So people can actually get to and from the interchange a lot faster than the current configuration. And lastly, we want, we want to also include a non-motorized transportation mode, for example, bikes and pedestrians facility. So the next project is the Grand Boulevard Transformation along El Camino and which we have been thinking and planning about for the last couple of years or so. So the project, like I mentioned earlier, would reduce the travel lane from three lanes in each direction to two. By doing so, we will have in our real estate to include a HOV, which is high occupancy vehicle bus lane along El Camino Corridor, by having expanded sidewalks, something in the neighborhood of 12 to 15 foot white sidewalk and also a white median landscape, landscape median. And also at all the crossing on El Camino, we want to have pedestrian, red future pedestrian. For some of the older pedestrian or some with challenging walking fast, when the traffic signal change from red to green, they could actually stay in the median by having a pedestrian refugio. And also, we are also looking at having a protected bike lanes along El Camino in both direction. Excuse me. The next project is the High-Speed Rail Millbury SFO Station Parking. So this project, we want to look at the entire site line from Millbury Avenue to Victoria to the north and the train track on the east side all the way to El Camino on the west side. So the project simply invasion, a future underground parking podium. We are looking at several subterranean parking, potentially up to four levels of underground parking, providing up to 4,000 stalls for vehicles. And the project would also be looking at spec and underground high-speed rail station, platform tracks, many other options that we will be looking at. And also at the same time, the concourse at the station will be expanded to accommodate airline check-in there. So when the passenger coming from the Central Valley getting off high-speed rail at Millbury, they could actually bring the suitcase to the concourse and check in with your respective airline counter, have the back go through a TSA screening and then have the back transport to the SFO. And also, one of the most important features of this project is the linkage from Millbury Station area-specific plan to Millbury downtown. And the last project is the improvement to the existing guideway, which is a train track from Millbury Station to SFO. So it will provide a seamless connection between transit modes and also efficient transfer between Millbury Station and SFO via air train. So the vision, the future visions of Millbury Station, not only it is going to be a high-speed rail station, it could potentially be expanded to be the fifth terminal of SFO by having airline checked-in facility at Millbury. So it is again a planning, in planning phase. So lastly, MTC has this really, really cool website, planbayarea.org. So anyone on the council staff or anyone listening in the audience that want to participate in the Plan Bay Area effort, please go to this website and sign up for that and you receive periodic update from MTC. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lim. Questions, council? Comments?
Madam Mayor.
Was that Ms. Pappan?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
So sadly, the city council gets kind of left out of the loop on these projects. What happens is that staff has these great projects, they present them to C-CAG, and then MTC evaluates them for regional significance. And as you can see, they're amazingly wonderful projects that we all need to be up to speed on, especially the underground station part. There, that means the region believes we should be studying an underground station. And Key, you need to change the name of that. It shouldn't be leading, we're not doing parking per se. The most important thing is to get really a study going for an underground station. And the county and the region believes this is highly significant. Where we would get the money fund, you know, it's pandemic time. But somewhere down the line, we should be lobbying to get these projects done. They are spectacular projects. They should be up on our website. We should be promoting them as part of Millbury. And we all know, we are united as a city council in our battle against high-speed rail. This shows the region believes we could, we should study an underground station there. This type of thing should happen. The Grand Boulevard, as the mayor had mentioned before. Millbury has the widest part of El Camino in all of San Mateo County. We can do spectacular things with that. We can get funding if we start promoting these type of projects, which again, the region has already said they believe are regionally significant. So I wanted to make sure the council is up to date because, I mean, it was a surprise to me on C-CAG when they came up. And it's, so let's, you know, please, let's get this stuff on our website. Let's make the council informed as to these type of projects and let's up our game here. Millbury can be spectacular. These are the type of things that will make it so. And by the way, the 2050 plan, I believe, has been approved by MTC. So for the next four years, it's moving into play. The funding for projects like this has been pushed out, but it can still happen somewhere in the future. And I have one caveat there. Part of the 2050 plan mentioned all toll lanes on the 101. I don't know if we mentioned that yet. That will come, that's not going to be imposed on our jurisdiction. They're going to study that. So like in four years, they're going to reevaluate that. But we clearly said we do not approve of that type of thing. That's it.
Before I call on Councilman Hollibur, a question from Mr. Lim or for Councilwoman Pappan. When these projects are listed, like $39 million or 89 million, does that mean we still have to shop for the money? Or does that mean that the region might actually put some money forth on this?
It means.
Assuming not COVID, but.
No, the region could if they're seeking funding out there for specific projects. Like, you know, they get funding for like undergrounding part of high-speed rail in San Francisco. This is where we need to take a more active role in lobbying for moving these projects up the food chain, I think.
Thank you. Councilman Hollibur, sorry, I jumped the line.
No worries. Thank you. You know, I was a little concerned at first to see the high-speed rail station making it on to this list, but, you know, pleased to see in the presentation that the discussion is an underground station, underground parking. I think it's incredibly important that, you know, the city is the lead agency on this project as much as possible because obviously, you know, high-speed rail has a very different idea of what the station should be compared to, you know, what we have presented to them. So, you know, if we can make sure that that's really, you know, a city of Millbury project, more so than a high-speed rail project, I think that would, you know, really benefit the project. It, you know, just don't want to keep, don't want to dunk on high-speed rail again, but it was recently announced that, you know, they have suffered another delay in terms of trying to, you know, extend service to the Central Valley and additional cost increases, it seems to keep going up and up. So unknown at this time if it's ever going to be a reality, but it's important that we're the ones really taking the lead on helping to design that mobile station, ensuring that it's a successful inter-mobile station. And then also, I just had sort of a question, a little bit of sticker shock in terms of these projects. Obviously, some of them are, you know, incredibly expensive, like the air train to SFO and changing the entire El Camino lane from potentially three lanes in each direction to two. But waiting Millbury Avenue from Rollins Road 101, that's truly only one block. It seems like $16 million is exorbitant amount of money to add one lane to one block of one street. Is there anything I'm missing there?
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
The reason why it is being fairly expensive because the city does not own the right of way. We don't have jurisdiction. So in order for us to accommodate the project, we need to wait for the redevelopment at the Wilson Plaza, which is the In-N-Out Burger site. So at which time, we might have to acquire some property in order to squeeze in an extra lane and also a non-motorized transportation mode along the Millbury Avenue corridor.
Okay, so it would be done, it would be done in conjunction with a potential development of the outside.
That is our planning process. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollibur. Vice Mayor Oliva.
So I echo all the comments made prior to anything that I have to say. I just want to coattail a little bit on what Councilmember Pappan said. And maybe we could put this, let's just not let it go tonight, but maybe put it on our goals list so that we could formulate some sort of strategy. And putting, because this, these are fantastic and like, they get, the two council people prior to me speaking said that we don't hear about them. We don't, we hear about them from elsewhere. And I'm super grateful and I liked especially what we saw with High-Speed Railroad. But I think we should make it a priority for us as council to figure out a strategy on how we can lobby this forward.
Vice Mayor Oliva, is that kind of also what you brought up yesterday? When we were talking about transportation agencies? Because I like the idea of looking at these large infrastructure projects and making it a goal. Not that it's an annual goal, but the goal of advocating for getting the money for it is a great idea.
I probably wouldn't use the word lobby, but we should advocate, come up with some sort of strategy to, to move up the food chain as Gina.
And I think Elaine sent out an email yesterday about trying to find a date for our next goal setting. So I know I missed it. If, if everybody, please check your entries for an email from Elaine for that goal-setting meeting. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's an important, important point that Gina brought up because we get, we get stuck on, you know, developments. But if we come up, you know, very strategically and focused on what kind of development. Thank you.
A couple of questions. I think each project sounds interesting. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Fun.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with all the council members that said a little earlier. And I would just add to the point where, you know, especially how the high-speed rail station proposal here being underground, we want to make sure that this is a successful project for Millbury. We want to make sure that it fits into our overall plan, what the station development is going to look like. And that is going to help Millbury a lot. I mean, this is, this is the lifeblood of our city. You know, we've got to be able to, you know, with these approvals and support from these CMAC committees, we've got to rally up the people there and really push this moving forward. And, you know, we have a council that, you know, I think we're all in agreement that these things are a high priority for us. And, you know, with this unanimous sort of agreement, like, like, you know, Ms. Oliva, Vice Mayor just said, like, they're a top priority to move this forward between the next two to four years.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So, Mr. Lim, question. Back on the capacity expansion on Millbury Avenue that I think Mr. Hollibur said was 16 million, where is our separated bike pedestrian overpass 101 in all of this or is it?
Mayor, the bike bridge project is actually on the county-wide, bike plan is on a separate document.
And is that only a bike bridge or is it bike pedestrian?
It is a bike and pedestrian, a Class 1 mixed-use overcrossing on the north side of the existing structure across US 101.
And it's gone from 12 million to how much?
We are looking at closer to a $20 million price tag with the escalator construction cost in the last two years. So it is a very pricey project. However, staff is looking at interim option. At this point, we are looking, actively seeking grant to see something that we can implement in between as an interim measure, such as a separated bikeway, pedestrian walkway on the existing structure.
Okay. This is where I agree with, with Councilwoman Pappan. There are so many projects and they fall in different silos. And how to track what's coming from C-CAG, BPAC, or the county BPAC, which doesn't necessarily get to the C-CAG BPAC, it can get very confusing, which means we're not necessarily primed to help advocate for Millbury. So I think that's what Vice Mayor Oliva suggested. So I think that's what Vice Mayor Oliva suggested during the goal setting. We talk about how we can advocate better for Millbrae with all of the hats that we wear would be a great idea. I love, I love the projects. I agree also that rename the high speed rail one, although it's probably already written in stone in Plan 2050. Okay, let's, yeah, but I, I had the same fears as the other council members when I read that. I go, wait, what's high speed rail doing there? So I'm, but I'm glad to see the details. I thank you for that and wow, good work. Is that unusual to get four projects all on one planned Bay Area?
It is.
So good work, staff.
Can I, yeah, no, yeah. We kind of requested the staff up their game more so because, I mean, we were seeing, no offense to the bike people, but you know, these are the type of projects that are hugely significant. And when we hear from other council members, we will, shall not name from other cities who say, no, Millbrae's not now. You can't get that. It's too expensive. The region believes these are highly significant projects. And as for the air train to SFO, that is one of SFO's top priorities. So we would have a partner in that. And it makes sense that they run their air train instead of the BART train. They should actually just take over the BART track. The air train's less expensive and just connect up the stations more so. So we would definitely get a partner from SFO in that one. We can get partners throughout here, but yes, having this on our goals really leading this like on our website and throughout the region. So people know that the region believes this is highly significant is so important for all of us and for the region. So I'm so glad we were finally able to get staff to bring it forward here because, I mean, these are great projects. So this can put not only Millbrae, but all of San Mateo County on the map.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Pappan for continuing to push it. It was great reading. Any additional questions, Mr. Hollibur? Or is that an old hand?
No, I raised my hand again. We'll try to keep it brief, but the discussion about the bike bridge over 101. And I know, Mayor Schiner, I know that's been one of your top priorities or a high, a high level priority in terms of a big project for the city. But, you know, if it's a $20 million project, that's, that's also something that, you know, you can't build half of a bike bridge to build, build the whole thing. So, you know, maybe it's just something to keep in mind when there are grants from V P A C or from, you know, other entities that maybe we can also be looking at, you know, smaller projects like, you know, while you can't build a quarter of a bike bridge, you could extend the spur trail by a half a mile or something that would be a tangible improvement.
Hang on to that thought. When I report out, we'll, we'll touch upon that. One of the things that I've noticed, if you look at the bike path down in Belmont, San Carlos or Redwood City, all of those have been cobbled together with multiple funding sources and they've gotten in one way, you could say they've gotten away with delaying a project, delaying a project as they wait for these various funds to all come in. But they now have really safe ways to get all the Ralston and to get over the other streets. And I'm sure you've all seen how scary it is for people with suitcases trying to get to our hotels from the BART station. So that pathway is also part of us selling our tourism. But I hear you. $20 million is a, oh, my gosh. But you know what? Actually, in the bike pedestrian program, they have these new quick builds, which in fact, I think Mr. Lim spoke about two weeks ago, we're doing a quick build project. So that's another way for those little pots of money. You go out, you do something quick and the public gets to see that we're moving forward and they get to learn about the various ways that slow traffic. So any further questions? I would just say thank you and wow, that's a lot of money.
So Mayor, just, just a quick comment. Just noted the council's comments here about, you know, staff improving the process to make sure that before we submit these grants, so we bring it to the council and that the council is able to review all of the, all of the projects the staff is working on. So you can actually be involved, help prioritize and, and make sure that we are submitting at the direction of the city council, obviously the council priorities as well. So we, Key and I have talked about it and we will bring in that, be bringing those to the council before we move forward with these large scale projects and grants.
Well, thank you, City Manager. Sometimes you have to jump quickly. And this emphasis right now on shovel ready quickly might mean especially in August, you'd have to pull us back together. What I do like is how community development has put all the projects on that website. So you can scroll down there, whether it's a small remodel or Office Depot or Burger King. You can see it all right there. Maybe that's something you can think about with all of these big infrastructure projects, even the little infrastructure projects. Because I notice when I do read next door, which I don't have much time for anymore, people do look at that page for community development and it helps them feel like they're more involved in the city. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we know how long, do we know how long the next item is going to be? Can we maybe be, it's been kind of a long night already.
I think it's going to be quick. We can also, it's
I think the city manager is shaking his head that it might not be.
Well, this is the parks.
He's on, he's on mute.
Well, I think, you know, to get into, and again, this is kind of what we're discussing this past item is a presentation, kind of a deep dive in where we are with our parks, our concepts, grant programs, and it is going to be a rather long item. So given the fact that the council met last night and is meeting tonight since five o'clock and it's 10, 10:05. I, yeah, no problem if the council would like to move this item two weeks and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
What would you like, council? I also had another council related meeting from two to three today. So it's been a very long day.
No problem, Liz. I would recommend that.
I like that recommendation.
Okay, I'm seeing a shaky, I'm seeing Vice Mayor Yay.
Who is, who is in for giving the report?
Mackenzie Brady.
Well, we made her wait till 10 o'clock to tell her sorry, Charlie.
She's good. She wants to go to bed.
She signs up for it. So Steph knows the drill.
She's got to get up early and feed the chickens.
Sorry, Mackenzie.
But thank you, Mackenzie. We do want to do a deep dive in all of our parks. I was especially interested in the Marina Vista Park. So I'm very curious and want to have enough time to do the work you've done considerable justice on that. Okay, that is the last item. How about we try to do our council comments quickly, starting with Councilman Fung?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are, we had a first legislative committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. We talked about some of the rules that we could be engaging in the upcoming year. And I think some of those could be on the board of director meeting. I think it was Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Pappan. And so also had met with the youth advisory committee and help some of these young leaders, they're excellent young leaders, you know, given the time that they're spending at home during COVID and still trying to thrive in their studies. And they still have the passion to put together this compost program. So I was telling, talking to Mackenzie some time ago that we should lend them whatever help we need to get them started with as soon as COVID is lifted. So just want to be expedient here. So, but and I'm waiting for a few other committees to gather. So quick update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Kind of going in reverse order, Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. M T C is meeting tomorrow, so that's going to be a long day and I'm glad we're cutting this one short. As Councilmember Fung said, the Legislative Committee for C CAG is meeting on Thursday. Lots of different legislation out there that will impact our community that's related to COVID. So we'll get a better briefing on Thursday. I have happy news. Millbrae has a new resident, my neighbor, little fella named Dylan Zhang Bankovich on February 2nd. And I said little fella, but he was eight pounds, six ounces. God bless his mother. Congratulations, Kevin and Michelle. Always nice to celebrate births as well. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Sure. Speaking of births, I think Gina Pappan's having a birthday this month, at the end of the month there, 26th. Happy birthday, Gina. I, I bring that up because the seniors started a new little program where on, on the first Tuesday of every month, they, they ask for a story of the senior, certain seniors. If it was their birthday, they give their story of their life or their, how they came to Millbrae and, you know, where they were born. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. It's been really great for the seniors because it turns into a really nice social hour. It's been more than an hour. I'll tell you that. But
Happy belated birthday to you too.
Yeah, I was actually one of their senior stories. I guess I'm a senior. But then I just wanted to, I, Sal's, I've been attending the Sal Board. Sal's probably going to stay, you got, everybody stay tuned. There's going to be a little bit of reorganization in that, that little board. And on the hearts, I joined a subcommittee on the hearts for bringing that reorganization as well. And I don't know where it'll go. Every Friday, I've been meeting for the last eight weeks with five other Sal Board members, putting a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort. I'm hoping that we get to some fruition to making some changes in that board. But one last thing I want to just comment on S B 91, which was signed in last week, the rental housing assistance program, you know, we're going to get one and a half billion dollars in rent relief. And it hasn't been decided on how it'll be allocated. But I think that everybody should be aware and be watching on how that allocation will go for both renters and landlords. So I will stay on top of that and, and probably in two weeks be able to report to you how that allocation is going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Hollibur.
Thank you. See, the technology subcommittee met last week. That was Councilmember Fung and myself to discuss the data center RFP. There was one proposal that we received and our staff was planning to meet with the proposer to go over their proposal and give you a little bit more information to determine if it was responsive to our RFP. Also, the library J P A governing board met yesterday. We approved an agreement with the city of Redwood City for the North Bear Oaks Library. This is a library that has been, the city, county owns the building, but it has been operated by the city of Redwood City. It serves both the city of Redwood City and the incorporated area. So it's going to be, the operation is going to go to the county library system. The city of Redwood City is going to pay, pay to offset some of the costs each year. So that was approved and we hope the county will be able to provide better service, more enhanced service. That was about it.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I know you're all dying to know what the vote was from the selection committee today. There was, there was no vote to do a vote, but we did a vote. The new S M T A director is Mayor Rico Medina. He received 12 votes to Mayor Justin Manalo's eight votes and a pledge that we all heal and move forward on that one. Ground Based Noise, a report, if you are at all interested in other potential future projects for Millbrae. The Ground Based Noise report has been released. Comments are due by the 18th of February. And it's, it's technical reading, but if you want to learn about noise, it's pretty interesting. It did prove that noise does concentrate and get louder as it moves up the hills. So it is true that Spotten Hillsborough, Hillsborough can be as noisy as Bayside Manor, which is counterintuitive. So it has some interesting findings. SFO Roundtable also meant Ivor Satiro, the director, said that they are, the numbers are weird. They're, they're below 50%, but they're also below 70% because they're counting either passengers or flights. At any rate, they are billions of dollars below their revenue for their capital improvement projects. But they are continuing to go forward on planning for when business gets better and they open up that new H gate. And that is our opportunity to talk to them about mitigation. They also want to move one of the two noise, permanent noise monitors in Millbrae. It's noise monitor number eight, which is located somewhere around the yard that you're looking for the data center. And the reason they want to move it is it's so noisy there. They can't use it for evaluating noise for the Public Resources Code Title 21. City manager and I have been working on trying to say, no, don't move it, move, add another monitor somewhere else. But we want that monitor to stay so that we can use it for both historical and future noise. The, bringing back the mayor's coordinating council, if anyone is watching, looking for all of our community groups, make sure that you're all invited. It will be same time as normal. The fourth Thursday at 8:30 and an invitation went out. Thank you, City Clerk Elaine for getting that out. I know she's been crazy busy. Peninsula Clean Energy voted to join a super J P A. So P C E is now part of what will eventually become eight or nine regional C C A's, Community Choice Aggregates. And it's to be able to improve our purchasing power for renewables and potentially to go together on renewables. The one thing that we did achieve, we did, it wasn't going to be in there initially and I don't know how it's gone, but pushing to make sure that the super J P A will include labor by local labor, labor and environmental criteria, because the, some of the other C C A's don't look at those issues. I attended a flood and sea level resiliency League of Women Voters presentation by Dave Pine about sea level projects. And it's interesting to know, because it's kind of the theme tonight, that of the four projects, the flood resiliency J P A is looking at is in Millbrae. It's the Millbrae Burlingame SFO project. He didn't go into great details, but there's some really nice graphics of what it could mean to the Cohen Canal and the High Line Canal. So this project is looking at our canals as well as that tiny strip of bayfront that we have. And then most of it is in Burlingame. And with that, it has been a busy month already. I thank all of you for being so busy and for a long night. I wish you a good night's sleep tonight. Well done, everyone.
Madam Mayor, sorry, one more thing, if I don't, just 10 seconds real quick. It's, it's sad to report, but I have to say it. We lost Rosalyn Koo.
If you'll hold on, if you'll hold on, I actually have that. So thank you for that. So if there's no further comments, the city council meeting tonight will be closed in memory of self-help for the elders founding organizer, Rosalyn Koo. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her family and her friends. And thank you for her great work for the elderly community and San Mateo and Millbrae. And if anyone has comments they want to share.
Yeah, so just real quick, thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, Councilmember Pappan, I sort of jumped there a little bit. Yeah, Ross has been an extremely generous and a huge champion for the elderly community and the Asian American community as well. It's a great, it's a big loss for us. But, you know, tech comfort, knowing that she did live the great life and passed away in her sleep with her family by her bedside. You know, I think, you know, she is going to be truly missed, a big champion for all of us. And rest in peace, Ross.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pappan, please.
Yes, Roz was just a force of nature, just an amazing, amazing lady for so many decades. Having started down in the city of San Mateo, helping us here in Millbrae. Just, she will be so greatly missed.
Okay, with that, we close in memory.
I, I'd like to just note Roz. One of the people that I got to know was self-help for the, self-help for the elderly and had to negotiate with Roz. And I think she's known and was known for being a great negotiator, but such
Don't mess with Roz.
Don't mess, such a sweet lady. And I am so sorry to hear about her passing. But when I think of Roz, I put a smile on my face because she was truly a wonderful woman and a leader, not, not just in Millbrae and San Mateo, but throughout the Bay Area. So, you know, we're going to miss Roz. She was very special.
And we got Maggie, Maggie's there too. Nice to see you, Maggie.
Thank you. Again, our thoughts and prayers and a nice tribute to her. Again, our thoughts and prayers and a nice tribute to her. And she'll live on with us in our memories. Thank you. And in her works.
Yep.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night. Be safe.
Good night. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, City Manager. I can never hit my leave button.